Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, January 24th, 2017 meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. This meeting is called to order. Our meeting is being recorded and aired live by LCTV. It is also being livestreamed on longmeadow.org. It is a legal requirement for anyone else to disclose if they are recording our meeting tonight. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to their republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no bounds. First on our agenda tonight is correspondence. We have an emailed letter from Kayla Worland, the music educator at Long Meadow High School. She informed us that the group, the Accidentals, which is LH- Long Meadow High School's co-curricular advanced treble choir, have been invited to perform at the 2017 Massachusetts Music Educators Association All-State Conference in Boston. They earned this honor via submission of a recording of their performance in the winter concert at the high school. And only four ensembles in the state have been selected to perform. So congratulations to the Accidentals. They will be performing on Thursday, March 9th, in the grand ballroom of the Sheraton at the Prudential Center. And she did mention that she's very proud of the students and very excited about the opportunity to showcase their work. So that's a wonderful and exciting event. I hope that people will be able to attend. Next on our agenda is approval of minutes. Do we have a motion?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes of the January 10th, 2017 school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Hey, all those in favor? Opposed and abstaining. One abstention. Next on our agenda, we have visitor comments. Do we have any visitors here tonight who'd like to make comments? School committee announcements and recognitions. Anyone? Nobody? I did want to say congratulations to two people. One, Marty O'Shea. I thought he made an excellent call on the delay for school this morning. He stepped outside the box, but man, was it the right decision.
Yeah, you definitely- you don't like to be on an island. And there was a couple of districts that called for a delay. And I would credit, honestly, the DPW crew and our custodial crew. They get out there early and they hit it hard. And they assured me early on that we would be ready to go with a two-hour delay.
Yep.
So I think we were in better shape than a lot of the surrounding towns. So I was appreciative of their efforts to get us in the door today, so.
I agree. I wanted to thank Mario and his crew publicly also for their work and getting our kids and our staff to school safely today was great. And I did send an email along thanking you as well. Next on our agenda is business with guests. And first, we have Mr. Tom Landers here, the principal of Long Meadow High School. And he'll be discussing the Educational Opportunities booklet for the high school tonight.
So as Tom is making his way up, this is an annual event where the high school principal brings the changes to the Educational Opportunities book to the school committee. And there are occasions when the changes require a school committee vote because it represents a significant curriculum shift or there's significant budgetary implications. And obviously, that's your decision. As I looked at the recommendations this evening that Tom has for you, it seems that they are adjustments, some many minor adjustments to existing curriculum, and there are no significant budgetary implications, nothing that can't be covered within the existing school budget. So I think this is here, Tom is here tonight to provide an overview of the changes and seek your support. But in our view, it wouldn't necessarily require a formal vote of the school committee. But of course, that's your prerogative, you know, either way, so.
So we don't need a formal motion?
In this case, I don't think you need a formal motion necessarily. I think it, you know, it would be a, you know, I think we're seeking your support. We're seeking, you know, we want to raise your understanding of where we are with that Educational Opportunities book. But I think you can decide for yourselves, but the changes are, don't have any budgetary implications, and they're not really major curriculum shifts. So hopefully, that's your impression as well.
All right. Good evening. As Marty said, our Educational Opportunities book is our program of studies, and I come every year and update the committee. This year's focus was really on cleaning up language, looking at old language that might be out of date, making sure that some of the descriptions met exactly what is going on in the day-to-day classrooms, and then looking at some minor changes, some combination of classes and things like that. So I'll walk through them quickly and answer any questions that you have. You have the one-page sheet, kind of the cheat sheet, if you will, and I'll follow that. A suggestion by administration was that we just clarify that homework in AP courses, Advanced Placement courses, may include homework every night, even on a night that you may not have class. These courses could carry, depending on your AP scores, and our AP scores are very impressive, could carry college credit. We just wanted to advertise more honestly to the student and the parent looking at this, that that is a possibility. Under World Language, we have not taught AP Latin courses at Long Meadow High School for years. Quite frankly, I don't have the staffing for it. And we didn't want to lead students and parents down the road of thinking that that was an option. So it has been dormant for years, and we wanted to take that off. Under the math section, it was really about cleaning up language. Those math department expectations, I think, were written 17 years ago. And we stripped them down and made them much more simple and straightforward, and also took the verbiage straight out of the current Massachusetts frameworks, which certainly have been updated in the last 17 years. And that includes the revised description of the courses that are listed, cleaning up some language for revised prerequisite for integrated math. The old language simply said that they would, that- the new language now says passing Algebra II rather than completed Algebra II. Nothing terribly different, but we thought it was clearer. And again, using the word minimum when describing, the department chair suggested that. Again, just to advise the parent and the student that if your son or daughter met that, they would meet that requirement, but that might give you more information to make an informed decision. Science, the real substantive change in science is just that we have an AP Physics course that we kept a few years ago. College Board made some shifts a few years ago, and we have an AP Physics I and II. It's really two courses crunched into one year. We had 11 contact hours, and the department feels confident they can do it in nine, and that would free up some student periods to take other classes and help with their scheduling. And then again, some clarification on prerequisites and wording to courses in the Science Department. In business, we have Business Law I and II, and we're going to combine two semesters into one full-year course, Business and Consumer Law. In art, 730, 731, and 732 are all art AP.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yep.
What's the purpose of doing that?
Art or business?
The business. Just help with scheduling?
It's to help with scheduling. It's to help with students to make a choice. They were running into a semester that's not necessarily long enough to go into the depth that they wanted. You had some students who wouldn't always line up semester courses. So a student might take first, it might be A block first semester, so it's cleaner. It would give students a choice to take a more in-depth, full-year-long exposure to the class.
Okay.
In art, the AP courses that are listed there, to have a student take one full year of an upper-level art course or departmental chair approval before jumping into an AP course, sometimes we've had students who just took an introductory ninth-grade art course, jump right into the AP art, and they've had some problems with that. So they still could do that, but they'd need to talk to the department chair and get approval. But we'd want them to take a course like Drawing and Painting, Sculpture and Ceramics, Digital Art and Photography, something along those lines, before they jumped into an AP art. And then just some clarification of that there are art competition registrations, some expenses associated with that, and also that there's a field trip expectation in the fall. Music is really an inclusion of advanced studies, similar to the art department. If a student wanted to take a second year of studio production with the consultation of the art department or the teacher, or the department chair or the teacher, that that is allowed. And in AP Music Theory, it's historically been open to everyone, but really, the suggestion is that that should be open to 11th and 12th graders. A ninth or 10th grader could still take it with the department chair approval. But again, we haven't seen students, ninth and 10th grade students, meet with the success we'd like. So we're going to discourage them from taking that unless it's an extraordinary situation and they chat with the department chair. Media Center really just advertises what we're already doing, that our NHS students are serving as our tutors, our student tutors. And we have a drop-in center in the Media Center. We're advertising that as much as we can. And lastly, in the Guidance Department, we're including an example of grading for summer school. Last year, we brought to the committee a change that said if a student takes an honors or an AP course at Long Meadow High School and they failed and they had to go to summer school, that on their transcript, it should reflect a CP1 level class. And they wouldn't get that 1.0 bump that they have earned in taking the class at Long Meadow High School and the rigor and the hours, et cetera. So that was okayed last year, but we wanted to include an example. So we've included an example of AP US History, just to give parents and students some more clear information. And the only other change, and it's not on your sheet, and I apologize, it was a last-minute change. On page 14 of the program that you have, it talks about honors courses. And down the bottom, there's two paragraphs, and it's outdated information and an aside conversation I just had with Stephanie. I just want to let you know that we're going to eradicate paragraph one and two because of some of the outdated language there. So those are the changes that we are looking forward to making. We are going to use this book. We give a hard copy to our incoming ninth graders. We're looking forward to meeting with our incoming ninth graders and their parents the week of, the last week of February. We have an academic preview day for all eighth graders in the town, public and private. Students who are welcome to the high school on February 28th. And then two days later, we have the eighth-grade parent night. And this is really a great resource for them. It's a great resource for other students to know and to plan their next academic year.
John.
Yeah, I have a question. And it's on Biology 431.
Okay.
The textbook is Biology, Kenneth Miller and Joseph Levine, Prentice-Hall, 2002. That's a 15-year-old textbook. Have there- is that adequate? Has there been revisions?
Yeah, so we go through, Sue Bertrand, as we speak, you know, is another inventory, as you probably remember, you know, of the books and the dates associated. This committee has okayed, in the past few years, several books, in science in particular. You've okayed Anatomy and Physiology books. But there are different books, and we could use updating. We're prioritizing. I know that one of the books that we're having discussions for for the next few years, we're having the discussion within science, is Chemistry or Biology needed more. Chemistry is our sophomore, our 10th-grade curriculum. Biology is our ninth grade. So the biology, some of the biology levels were updated a few years ago. We're talking about the 431 as to when. We're talking about the Chemistry books. We're talking about World Language books. So we're looking at that. They're physically, they're getting beat up, but they're working right now. There's a process, as you know, that we have a committee that meets and puts a parent on that committee and talks about. So that's one of several, to be fair, John, that we're looking at. But 2002 is 15 years old, so that certainly is in the cycle of us to review that.
Okay. I just thought I'd draw your attention to it. Thank you.
Russ.
Two questions for you. We are trying to deal with that in the budget, too, the curriculum issue.
Right.
With the art, it looks like the expenses you're talking about is $5, that fee, or is there something else?
Yeah, no. I mean, that particular fee is a $5 fee, and we just wanted to throw that in there to be upfront.
Okay. And then the AP homework. On days when you don't have class, are you saying that, you know, you have a class on Monday and they give you enough homework that's really a Monday, Tuesday homework assignment, and then on Wednesday you come in with it? Or are kids coming in and dropping something off on a Tuesday in that example?
I mean, it depends. Some AP teachers don't do that. We don't have to say this. We just, we ran into some students who were confused and frustrated this year, and we just want to be more upfront that depend, based on the fact that we have eight blocks and we run six a day and we drop two, and based on the fact of the pacing of the curriculum of AP, because the exams are in early May. So you're really, you're crunching an entire year's worth into, up through the end of April. Very often, and all AP courses are not equal, but I know Physics, for instance, is a difficult, rigorous course. We just felt we wanted to advertise that theoretically, so many teachers utilize their webpages and electronic communication, and so many students and teachers communicate that way. We just wanted to be upfront that you could not have class on a Tuesday, but a teacher could post something at 8:00 a.m., and it could be due Wednesday, even though you're meeting, say, Monday and Wednesday. And again, it's not a new practice. It's been going on forever, but we just wanted to make the consumer aware before they delve into that class.
So the basic expectation is just check every single day if you have AP?
Right.
My sense is that this wouldn't be a big surprise to your AP students. They realize there's always something that they could, should be working on in an AP class. It's ongoing.
Correctly. As a matter of fact, it's almost more for the parents than it is for the students, because the students know that, they have those dialogues. It's in the syllabi that the teachers give them, but it's just more honest, upfront information for a parent and a student.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions for Tom? So just very briefly, I just wanted to touch on that one item that John brought up about the outdated textbooks and curriculum. And this is more a sort of generic statement, because everybody's here tonight, that, you know, I know we've talked about the school committees really trying to stay out in front of curriculum needs and textbook needs a little bit better. So it's really helpful to us if we can, you know, keep those committees, the review committees, going and just keep the process sort of churning along so that we have things that are lined up and ready to go, that we can incorporate into our budget. I don't know how much of a change that is for, you know, the principals from how it's been in the past, but the more that we can stay on top of those reviews, even if we're talking a year or two out, so that we have them lined up and prioritized, it's really helpful for us in budgeting and be, you know, making it more likely for us to access those needs. So that was the only comment I wanted to make. But thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks much.
Next on our business with guests, we have Nicole Allen here from Glenbrook Middle School.
Hello.
Hello.
Nicole's middle school colleague, Taylor Ry, is unable to be with us tonight for reasons we understand. So Nicole is here to, I guess, a general update on where we are with the recess conversation.
Yeah, so you know, the school committee's sort of, we've had a lot of conversations about recess and the concept of recess. And so we really appreciate you coming tonight and being part of that ongoing conversation that we're having this year.
Sure.
And could I, just to maybe nestle this in a broader context, I think there's been some very encouraging discussions going on on a number of fronts around the concept of students being active learners, providing more opportunities for movement, brain breaks. I feel like I'm bumping into that conversation time and again, and that's really encouraging. Last night, we submitted the statements of interest, or presented the statements of interest to the select board. And even in the, some of the narrative that went with that statement of interest, we talked about the need for buildings that promote flexibility and mobility and access and giving students opportunities to move. And so, and we've talked a little bit about the idea of outdoor learning spaces, and there was a great discussion today at the Wellness Committee that Liz had an opportunity to take part in. And that's the committee that is headed up by Sue, so we can talk about that as well. So there's a lot of, I think, encouraging signs around that. And I think there seems to be an increased interest, you know, across the board in giving students those opportunities to be active so that they're not sedentary, they're not fixed in their seats, you know, all day. So anyways, that's kind of the broader context, but I think the committee was more specifically interested in, you know, where, what we could do at the middle school, and it's an ongoing conversation, I'd say.
For anybody at home who's watching, who didn't watch our previous meetings, for additional context, it is, the concern that was raised is that there is recess up until sixth grade, and sixth grade has a very brief recess time during the day, but then seventh and eighth grade currently doesn't have recess as part of their day. So that's why Nicole graciously came tonight to talk to us a little bit about the possibility of that and all of the logistical implications that could come along with, go along with that.
Yeah, so I would say that the logistical part is probably the hardest part, because after speaking to the seventh and eighth grade teams and the other teachers, no one's opposed to that happening.
Yeah.
Which is always a good thing. It's nice to have everyone kind of in agreement that they think that that would be a nice idea, but how will it work is really how it turns out, so.
But philosophically, you felt like everybody was in agreement.
Yeah, they sort of were like, oh, that wouldn't be bad, but how would that take place and when? And would it be before lunch? Would it be after lunch? And who's supervising? And that's kind of the stuff that we talked about and brought back to the table when we had met as an admin with Taylor as well, is just to talk about the challenges that we would run into with something like this. So then we talked about how, you know, I know the elementary has lunch, and then they go into a, you know, a recess time, and could that work for our seventh and eighth graders? But if we did that, who would supervise that time? Because that's the time the teachers are eating as well. So are we now going to ask for adult monitors, people we might not know, to give them a stipend to come watch kids that they're not used to? So I guess we're just trying to figure out how it would play out and it would work. So, you know, I know there's two things here. There's recess where you're looking for the fresh air and being outside and them having that socialization piece. And then there's other things that we are improving upon, you know, as a middle level on movement in the classroom. So I know there's two things going on here, and I know the outdoor one is the one that we're taking a peek at. So we're just trying to figure out what that would look like and how it would work. So our sixth grade right now, you know, and they're sixth graders and they're younger. And I think a lot of times that we struggle with the sixth grade is just how do they appropriately socialize outside without getting hurt every day? So they're visiting the nurse often, they're excited, they're playing a bunch of sports. And, you know, so what are we looking at during that time? Where would our students, seventh and eighth, have recess? Because if they were to use the same area the sixth grade does, they would disrupt the entire, at our school, at Glenbrook, they would disrupt the entire sixth-grade hallway where they have the classes, so, because it's all behind on that blacktop. So that's where recess takes place. So if sixth grade's in class and we had seventh and eighth grade out there in that spot, it would disrupt the classes. So I think, so I think we are in agreement that this is a good idea. We just have to figure out how it would work. And then we'd have to almost like look at a different schedule, take minutes from here and there to create time that there's a possibility that our own teachers could supervise it so that we wouldn't have to outsource people that may not know our students. So I don't know if that makes any sense, but.
Yeah, it definitely makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, so there's definitely some challenges to this piece. And if we cut lunch short, are we saying the kids are required to go outside? Or could some of them stay inside? And if that happens, then we're looking at, because right now, all we have for supervision is the person that runs lunch duty, and that's, there's only three of us for each grade. I do one, Bridgette does one, and our guidance counselor does one. So if we allowed for kids to continue to stay inside, have an option of going in or out, then we would stay in with them, and then who's going to go out with the other And our kids, I would say, we give them, they're about 24 minutes of lunch. And I'd say the last four is when they are like officially done and, you know, excited. But it's hard to like, it's hard to open up a door after like 15 minutes to let them go, because you want to make sure they're not, that they're getting time to eat. So I think we're just trying to figure out how this would play out. And if, and if we were to do something like this, our schedule would have to change, because time would have to come from somewhere, and that would come off learning. But we'd have to figure out a way to do that.
So Taylor Ry, Williams' principal, not with us tonight. Comparable conversations happening at Williams. And so I want to thank Nicole for kind of keeping the ball rolling here. My hope would be, again, to come back to the committee at a date to be determined. I suppose you could kind of set that date. Come back to you with kind of a broad plan for how we're going to address the recess issue. And then also, even going beyond that, you know, how can we commit to more movement, more opportunities for brain breaks, more opportunities for kids to be mobile learners? And again, there's a lot of great stuff happening already. This is not a new initiative. I mean, I think certainly, at the elementary level, there's equipment and there's an orientation towards keeping kids active. And so, you know, can we, can we move that, roll that forward? Can we roll that into the middle schools to a greater degree? And as Nicole says, there's an interest there. I think the thing with recess is, you know, you want the behavioral expectations that you have during the school day to sort of transition to recess as well. And you want people who are watching the children at recess to understand what the behavioral expectations of the school are. But you also want them to know the kids, right? You want them to know who the kids' peer groups are. You want to know, you want the monitors to know what makes the kids tick, what their interests are, what their, you know, what issues they might be dealing with. There's, so monitoring recess at the middle school, I would say, is a lot, it's a very different dynamic than, let's say, monitoring lunch at the elementary level. I think there's different challenges, not necessarily more difficult, but different.
John.
In your proposal, you say 10 to 15 minutes. Why can't you tell us, is it 10 or 15? Or is this something that would change from day to day, or?
That was the-
Oh, that was just, oh, they have this.
The school committee. Yeah, that was-
Yeah, so this is just, that was us trying to just kind of play out what, how much time we're going to have to figure out. So we average it'd be somewhere between 10 and 15. Right now, our sixth graders get 13 minutes of recess. So we figured it'd probably be somewhere in there that we were just, that was just a number we threw out. It wasn't like we knew exactly what it was going to be. I think it was just like, we're trying to allow for that 10 to 15 minutes. And another question would be too, is it, does it have to be daily? Or right now, the middle school's schedules on a six-day rotation. Could it be every other day that they're doing something like this? And if that were the case, then maybe, you know, those three days would be like our advisory days where you're cutting a little off to give more time, but not every day had to have recess. So I think there's some things that we can work with and try to figure out. But it would need time. It would need us looking at our schedule and, you know, and then, you know, there's stuff we talked about, maybe this spring coming up is maybe trying it out a couple of days, seeing if it would work, like rearrange a schedule on different days to see if it would play out when it's nicer out, where they could be outside and see how it plays out, and how many kids would actually take advantage of it, or would there be a big group of kids that would rather just sit inside and talk, which is fine. It's just, we just have to sort of figure out how it would work. And if we were gonna, we also talked about using the cafeteria parking lot. Now, it's not ideal, but if we, if we had staff park, you know, during two lanes and then had an area that literally was just coned off for them to just kind of hang out in and-
Or on the side.
Yeah, yeah, like the one, you know, it's out by where the parking lot is.
Yeah.
So if they stayed to this side, then where the like buses kind of line up in the afternoon, if that area was just kind of for them. But again, it's like, how many sports do you allow for seventh and eighth? Because the sixth grade sort of has free range of the field and the blacktop and, because they're the only ones out there and on that level. So it was just figuring out where and- So it was just figuring out where and how the time's going to fit in, who's supervising, and how often we have to do it, or, you know, so just kind of gauge.
That sixth grade recess isn't interfering with classes inside?
Yeah, sometimes. So the eighth grade, you know, when they have the windows open, it does for a little bit. So we kind of try to figure that out. It's hard to tell them, you know, tell them not to scream. But it's really hard to tell the sixth grader not to run around and scream, but.
Yeah, also, it's probably good that they're screaming.
Yeah, so there's times where you say, yeah, where you say stuff and like let them like, you know, let's just be aware there are classes happening above you and, you know, just to be aware of that. But there is times when it's tougher, when it's warmer out, and we deal with that, but.
Stephanie?
I just have a few questions. So the sixth grade recess, does it work the same at both Glenn Brook and Williams? And when, I don't know if I missed it, when does it occur?
So I think it's different at Williams. You guys have it before? Yeah, so we used to do it before. We, ours now occurs right after.
Okay. And then, there used to be a recess for seventh and eighth grade?
I wasn't around for that.
A long time ago, or never? So there's no comparison? Okay, so it's never. Okay, we're going back.
Yeah, so I'm not, if there was, I'm not, yeah, I didn't know.
He's still angry about that.
Okay.
It's why it came up.
Yeah.
Liz didn't either, she was shaking her head.
And has there been sixth grader, is that new, or that's always been?
Oh, yeah, always. I actually remember that, yeah.
And is there any thought about getting student input as to what they're looking for?
Yeah, we talked about that too when we sat down. And we talked about maybe surveying them or, you know, asking them what they'd be interested in doing. Yeah, we have no problem doing that at all, so we could do that.
Would the committee want to hear about the Wellness Committee's discussion around recess? Again, Liz had an opportunity.
I can tell you what I took away from the meeting. Just get my notes. Well, we started off like watching this TED Talk by, it was called Run, Jump, Learn. Exercise Can Transform Our Schools by John T. Rat- Ratty? It was amazing, just showing statistics of how exercise makes your brain stronger. And it showed results of test scores and all sorts of behavior problems go down. There were lots of graphs in that, so I recommend watching that. The, the things that we wanted to, and because it helps regulate emotion, that was something else they talked about, alleviate stress. So we definitely, you know, want recess. And some of the articles that we read also said though, that the breaks should be longer instead of short little breaks. And what else? So our other ideas were to integrate exercise, like in the, before school happens, because a lot of kids get to school much earlier than they're supposed to be there. So maybe a stipend or something like that that could help pay for some structured play. Mileage club again. We also talked about trying the recess before lunch at all the elementary schools because it seems to be, through studies and everything, it seems to work for kids and their energy levels and their brains. And there was also a really good app that a teacher uses in, at center called Go Noodle. And that every, a lot of people looked at and loved it. So I think we're making progress and we're going to have some recommendations for the school committee and for teachers probably next meeting. Solidify, yeah, solidify them. So I understand your constraints, but I think we can, you know, getting any sort of exercise, whether it be like through recess or if we add it to the beginning of the day, I think that's great because I think the pediatrics, American Pediatrics said, as long as kids get 60 minutes of exercise a day. So we have to, you know, have a little bit in school, but we're guessing that they do get a lot, or at least our community gets a lot after school. So if we just have like half of that in school, that'd be great.
I remember a lot of things that came up during today, like we fully studied recess and movement in the classroom. We found that potentially, like 13 minutes of recess might not be the optimal amount and it might, kids might not be done with their recess. You know, they're coming in in the middle of a game and they're bringing that back to the classroom with them. And so we have a lot of work to do, like determining appropriate amounts of time. And so if we can't get a half an hour recess break, do we then look for movement in every classroom as opposed to a recess? So we have some work to do on that. And we got a lot of really good information today and a lot of good feedback, so.
Which I have to say, I think movement in the classroom has been increased upon this year especially. We even had someone come in who specializes in this, Lynn Pantusko, and talked to. I took her a walk around Glenn Brook, showed her our layout, showed her, and then she gave us a bunch of ideas of things that we could be doing, things that we could order, simple things like the stability cushions and different things that the kids could be doing. I know we want to use that with having like some actual recess time, but I think having movement in the class too is good for, you know, the students as well as a balance of both.
Absolutely. And we even said we would like to see it in the high school too.
Yeah.
I don't know about cycle desks in the high school.
There's a leaf grant coming from Glenn Brook. So.
So it sounds like you're going to try some things out in the spring. Obviously, we had to talk to the union about this as well, but.
Well, we talked about pilot, like, because we didn't know, when we first, it was, when it first came to our attention about the recess thing, we weren't sure how quickly this was something that wanted to be put in place. So we discussed like, it'd be really difficult to just change our schedule to accommodate this, this year. But maybe in the spring, we would try for more opportunities to be outside, whether we chose some advisory days to be able to have the kids do more of their stuff outside or spend time doing that. So we said we would just try to figure out a way to get them out, outside more in the spring. I don't know how it would, it would look like as far as like the scheduling and the time for the people, but we, we talked about maybe figuring out certain days of the week that we could allow for something like this to take place, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'd rather, and I definitely could be in the minority on this, but I'd rather have Sue and all of you and the union and the students kind of talk about a plan that might actually work long-term as opposed to trying to rush something through this year.
Right.
I mean, if you try things this year, that's great, but.
Which is what, this is exactly what we're, we're saying. Like, we said we would pilot, would probably be the best we could do is to offer some time in the spring. But to change everything right now would be really, I think it'd be really difficult to add something else in right now.
Yeah, I'm not even sure the 10 to 15 minutes. I kind of agree with you that if we're going to make some major shift with the schedule, let's make it for something that actually fits what the studies say we should be doing as opposed to just coming up with a number. So it's, I think it'd be good to really look at that carefully, but.
Yeah, and I have no problem continuing to work on this with whoever wants to work on it because I think it's important. And then depending on the number, we also can't forget the time on learning. We just have to be careful about that, that piece of it as well. So we're definitely willing. I think, you know, across middle schools, we're definitely open to this. I think we just have to figure out how it works and scheduling wise and how to fit it in, so.
Sounds good. Thanks for working on this.
Yeah, thank you.
I think it's helpful that everyone's sort of on the same page philosophically because that's really the most important thing. It's not how fast we accomplish it, but the fact that everybody's prioritizing it and it's always the devil's in the details, I think, with anything, you know, that we know is really good for us or for our kids. But the implementation, I, you know, we all respect and appreciate the fact that it's complicated. But I think, you know, from everything that everybody's reading now, and, you know, Nicole just happens to be on the hot spot tonight, but you're not on the, on the hot seat now. It's just, it's interesting that successful school districts, and especially you're hearing, you're hearing a lot about, we're hearing a lot about internationally, school districts, countries that are taking more time outside for recess are actually performing at higher levels. And that's really compelling evidence that, you know, we focus so much in this country on time on learning and there's so much pressure and the teachers are feeling so much pressure, the students are feeling so much pressure. And ironically, really, we would, I believe, be more successful if we did have, you know, have these breaks. And in particular, the value of being outdoors is so great, not, not just, you know, the breaks. And then the other issue that I hope the Wellness Committee can look at and everybody can sort of start to look at is the recess before lunch concept. There's a lot of data that's been, and a lot of studies that have been done on the recess before lunch concept. We've talked about it, a lot at Blueberry, you know, there's tons of logistical things that can be complicated. I think Wolf Swamp, you do, you do it that way. Every school is different, but, you know, that would be something to for sure work towards. You know, it's just behaviorally and in terms of digestion and the level of nutrition our kids are getting. A lot of kids, our parents are reporting, kids are really rushing through their lunches to go outside instead of getting everything out of their system, coming back in, settling and eating. And then, you know, going back to class would really be the ideal there. But again, I think, you know, Liz really hit on the important issues of seeing the dip, with outdoor recess, seeing the dip in the behavioral issues and the increase in the academic achievement is what we're going for. But the overall wellness of our students in Long Meadow. My one question is, for sixth grade with the, with the monitors, are you finding that there's a lot of intervention that's needed? I was just curious because it, I think at the elementary level, people are feeling like there's increasing supervision that's needed during recess. So it's a little, I think it's a little complicated, that becoming more complicated at the elementary level. Do you see that in sixth grade, or do you feel like?
Me having to intervene with?
Yeah. Do you feel like there is a lot of intervention that's necessary or for the sixth graders? Or are they sort of doing their own thing and it's generally okay and peaceful?
Peaceful, that's funny. So sixth grade, yeah, I would say, as far as intervention, we have to talk to them often because they just get excited and they're running around. They want to hang out with their friends and it's like their time to run around. Like we said, it's, you know, they want to do it. But it's, it's difficult sometimes because they are, they get hurt a lot. They're in the nurse office a lot because of recess injuries. And, you know, if there's indoor recess now, we try to, you know, they're like walking the gym and doing stuff because sometimes they just get really excited and they're, they're doing stuff that they get hurt. So as far as intervention for kids who are horsing around, sometimes we have to, like even if it's tag football, you know, there's a tackle every once in a while. So it's just, it's about them just knowing their boundaries and what they're, in the appropriate place. So it just takes time, but they get there. It's just sometimes you have to take away certain games and have them earn it back. Or, you know, lacrosse sticks probably aren't the best thing to be, or balls flying through the, and they hit somebody who's just hanging out with their friends. So there's just, we do have to sort of monitor it and they're, they're great about it. It's just sometimes they just have to understand what the appropriate play is and how not to be rough. And it's not like they mean it, it's just them playing and having fun, but, you know, we have to put things in play.
It's not so much the interpersonal, social, it's more of the physical.
No, and if we see, if there's stuff that we have to worry about social, emotional wise, then it's brought to our attention and we address it if need be, but.
But that's not the prevailing.
Not typically, not for right now.
That's great.
I have to say, but, yeah, just more of them, just sometimes just playing a little too hard.
Yep, yep.
But.
And I'm thinking as a former high school and college athlete, you're probably speaking from personal experience about playing rough at recess.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, they're having fun, they're excited, but it's, you know, sometimes you have to be like, it's just, you know.
Yeah, you know, I think we're all sitting here thinking, it's just so many hours for these kids to be sitting, sitting, you know, inside.
Which is why we are encouraging more movement in the classes because when they're moving around, we have some teachers that are noticing they're not going to the bathroom as much because they're moving around in classes at different stations.
So they don't have to get up to move, go to the bathroom.
Yeah, they're not signing up to go to the bathroom as much for teachers that are actually utilizing it a lot.
That's great.
So we are trying to do more of that with the teachers. We did a PD with the teachers on it. So I just think, you know, some of them are really embracing it and others, you know, just keep reminding them and they get it, they agree. It's just.
I think, you know, Dr. O'Shea has really, we've been talking a lot about this and talking about movement in the classroom and how much it will help children to be able to learn, to have access to, you know, movement and not feel like they're just confined to their chairs and they can't move. And it, you know, like that, it's that sort of old school concept of education is really, really detrimental to, we're finding, you know, to, for a lot of kids. So I think we're all moving in the right direction. Appreciate you coming. Michelle?
Thanks. I just wanted to say thank you for looking into it and doing all the work. And I think it's no secret, I'm a big proponent of vice or outdoor recess. And I think, I knew it was going to be complicated. So I would love if you guys could continue the momentum and really formulate a plan so that we could integrate it into the day. You know, it sounds like it's going to take a while to frame it out.
Taylor and I will have to just work, like we said, on the schedule and stuff. We share teachers, so we just want to make sure we're doing it right.
Yeah, and whatever we need to do, you know, through the budget or whatever to support it happening, you know, I think.
Yeah.
We're all, it sounds like we're all open to that, so.
We all want to be here as a support, you know, to everybody, to all the staff. We don't want to feel like we're putting more pressure on you. So I hope it can be a two-way street and, you know, we can keep the live communication open. Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks. I need to go to our seventh and eighth grade concert, so I have to.
Yes, 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 it's quarter to seven, so. Thank you so much, Nicole.
Thanks, Nicole.
Next on our agenda, our last item on our agenda of business with guests is Alex Matreski is here with us and he will be giving us an overview about his community preservation application. And Alex, you are looking for a formal vote from us tonight, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, so we'll just, do you want to motion on now, or do you want to let him intro?
I'd rather hear the presentation, I think.
Do you want to give us sort of an overview?
Sure.
Thanks for coming tonight.
We'll be glad to thank you everyone for having me. Maybe 20 seconds just to say thank you for yesterday's meeting with the select board. I watched it with great interest and I just really appreciate all the effort that you guys have put in in the effort to find a solution to improve our middle schools. I know this has been an issue for longstanding for some folks like Mr. Clark, Mr. Fitzgerald, Ms. Bone, who've been working on this and continue to work and trying to find a solution. So thank you so much. And I thought it was a very good meeting, very open discussion, so hopefully.
Thank you.
Some progress will be made.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, we felt like it was a good meeting too. Appreciate that.
Sure. So maybe just a couple of background information. I sit on the Board of Long Meadow Soccer Association. And when springtime comes around, usually lacrosse takes precedence on the field usage. So places like Woolswamp Field is where they use solely the fields. And then Long Meadow Soccer Association has to basically rent fields outside of town. So we play our games in Springfield and we practice in East Long Meadow. We don't have any fields that are allowed to be used in, in Long Meadow. So last year, for the first time in the spring, the parking rec allowed us to use, in conjunction with talking to the principals at each school, Woolswamp School and Blueberry Hill School. We looked at the fields and we're very excited to finally have some field usage to use, to have soccer practices during the spring in town. But once we looked at Woolswamp School in particular, we realized that that surface was not playable for soccer or any kind of activities. And I actually have a picture here and I have several others to show you. A good part of the field just really doesn't have any grass. So then we switched over to Blueberry Hill School and used that area for, for practice. The problem there in both of the fields is there is no irrigation. So you're pretty much at the mercy of nature, how much water is provided and how much grass grows. In the last few years, there's been severe droughts, if you've been following the news. So what happens is during practice, I would notice a lot of my girls, especially some of the that I coached that have asthma or any kind of respiratory issues, would have a hard time actually practicing and just because it's just a very dusty area. And when I saw that, and I know that kids use this area also for recess, I figured that something should be done to sort of improve the playing surfaces for recess and also for, for these sport activities in town. So I talked to the town and I think town, the town manager and DPW is open to improving the fields, but their issue is always irrigation. It's a high capital investment initially and they say basically, if we don't invest in irrigation, there's no sense of trying to level the fields or seed it because it just won't grow or it will just be a sort of a waste of taxpayers' money. So irrigation is really the, the primary sort of a need to improve the fields. They are obviously seeding and leveling also. So then I looked to the Community Preservation Commission, which has a fund and they allocate funds to projects for public use, open spaces. So that's where I did my research and submitted applications for both of these schools to basically get a contractor to level the area, seed the area, and then install irrigation. So that's sort of in a nutshell, the, the, the scope of my presentation. I do want to mention a few things. Mr. Bradshaw from Woolswamp School, he also submitted an application to improve the Woolswamp School area. He has sort of a even broader vision. He had a field improvement irrigation, one of his projects, but he wants to add some more of a bike track through the woods and some. He had a field improvement irrigation, one of his projects, but he wants to add some more of a bike track through the woods and some few other improvements as well. And he, you know, using his words, he said basically during recess, there's a dust plume and I see kids in there playing during recess. So he was very excited to see there are other people who are also thinking about improving the, the area there. So what, I think, I sent you an email on this in November, but one of the things that you need to be aware of is that once irrigation is installed, there will be some bills that need to be paid for the additional water usage, which I think impacts the school budget. So I think that's something that I, that I discussed with Mr. Mazza that is something that you should be aware of. And obviously also that there will be some interruption while the work is being done in the, on the fields as well. So the Community Preservation Commission reached out to me and said that they would like to receive an approval from the school committee that you endorse this project, that I'm sort of not doing this while you, you have this approval or you're, you're not supporting this type of project. So I think Mr. Mazza has been helpful. We talked over the holidays a few times trying to figure out ways out, you know, what we can do. I've talked to DPW as well and they've been very helpful in this effort. So I think at this point I can stop and answer any questions that you may have.
Michael?
Do you want to do a motion first or do you want to just?
Yeah, why don't we do?
And then I'll ask my questions after.
Your motion, either you or Russ?
Sure. I move school committee recommend or vote to support the community preservation application, applications offered by Mr. Matreski for Blueberry Hill Playground and Woolswamp Playground.
Second.
Okay, so I got some questions. So first, thank you for submitting these. I know that, you know, these projects have been on our list, on our radar for years. And as you can probably appreciate, with six buildings, there's a lot of different priorities, some health and safety that kind of outweigh what is certainly an important project just based on sort of the importance of those. Couple of questions that I have though, you know, we went through a very similar process in 2013 with Center Schools Playground. And one of my questions is, you know, the total CPA appropriation for that was 27,500 and it was a much, much smaller parcel of land. Are you confident that the, that 40,000 is enough to accomplish this per school? I know the total ask is 80,000.
I think that's a very good question. So a couple of things I think that are different between the projects, I think the Center School went with turf.
No, it's, it's grass.
Sorry, I meant sod.
Yeah.
That's what I meant, not turf, turf is not allowed in school properties, sod. So that dramatically increases the cost. And if you look at some of the offers that were submitted here, it magnitude by three times. So I think that was the, the, one of the reasons why the cost was there higher. The other aspect is where I feel there is, I'm confident that these funds would, would be. The, the estimates are for the entire grass area, which includes two fields, sort of space. So I don't, so we may just do partial part and install one field area irrigation for one area with the ability to extend on that area if we want to extend. Because I think the issue is there's sort of a general natural way how the, the fields are shaped where you can have just one field. But I don't know how the other areas, for example, Mr. Bradshaw wants to do some other work that may be reconfigured and so on. So that's where I think the applications and the quotes, so the third piece of information that I'm, sort of gives me confidence is that the two, the two companies that are used for quotes are the two companies that the DPW had recommended to me that do work in town. So these are folks that know the town, they know the size, they've done the prevailing wage sort of estimate. So I mean, it once comes down to bits, things may change.
Right.
But I also feel like they will also sharpen their pencils in order to get these projects done, so.
Okay, no, that's good. So I got a couple more if that's okay, Jess?
Yeah.
So if, if there is an overage, do you think that Long Meadow Soccer is willing to pick up any overage in the cost to get the project done? Or is that something that you have not discussed yet? Not that I'm asking you to, I just want to know.
I think that we would be open to entertain that idea because like I said, right now we would pay field usage in Long Meadow to Springfield. So we'd certainly like to help to promote the sport and the open area as well. So obviously that will have to come from the entire board.
I appreciate that, okay. I know that you had mentioned that you'd spoken to DPW about their sort of desire to see these fields brought back into good repair. Have you spoken with them about their commitment to maintaining those fields after they've been restored?
Well, I think, so, yes, so it's current responsibility for them to be maintained. So they, that's already on their plate. What may be added on is that grass may have to be cut every other week instead of every third week. Or so there is an added strain to sort of that type of a.
Sure.
Grass usage and also maintaining heads and things like that of the irrigation.
But they expressed an openness to taking on that additional work?
When I spoke with Mr. Mario, he basically said it to me and also during the CPC that he supports these applications to the CPC. But he did, he was very upfront that there will be that added strain to the DPW.
And in your conversations with him, did he, did you talk at all about a maintenance plan for the, for that parcel? Or has that not come up yet? Is that something we should be kind of talking with them about?
Yeah, maybe it's something I haven't come up.
And, you know, obviously the town budget being what it is, obviously CPA is a little outside of the budget, but they're limited in how much they have available as well. Do you have a preference in terms of which application is accepted and which one's not?
Right, they asked me the same question too.
I'm sure they did.
And it's kind of one of those things, which child do you like the more? And my kids go to center now, so I really don't have any vested interest. So can we increase the grass in center? I really don't have a preference, I think they're both are in dire need. So what I said to them was the application is 40,000.
Yeah.
And I feel like if they grant half per each, there could be area for playing area for per field and irrigation installed. I feel like even 20 per each school would, that's how, what I would do is split 40.
You'd rather have them split it.
So that each gets a little bit of improvement.
You know, one of the things that we periodically do with these types of projects is we phase one and phase two. Is there, do you know if there's like a willingness to come back again next year if it's not entirely funded and go through the process to try to pick up the additional work?
Right, I think, I think that wishful thinking is to get two fields and a lot of that area there because it will give us more flexibility. But I think realistically, one field is probably at most it can be done in phase one. Phase two can always be, and once you get all the installation, a lot of the work is a lot more cheaper to do that.
Right.
So I think that's where it would be phase one. There is another bigger project that's also, that I've submitted an application for is the Woolswamp Fields.
That's a big project.
So that's installation of, of a well there and pump and a lot of bigger area. And that's a project that may also be a multi-phase project as well. So I think putting a nice grassy area for the kids there for recess in one field per school, I think would be a great start. And then maybe continue with that in a few years. But I think after that, I think I would look more to the school and figure out what they would like to do with the area. Because right now, like I said, there's already like sort of a natural playground area, field area, but to expand that, I wouldn't try to do it myself without the school principal there.
My final question, one of the big issues that we ran into with Center Schools was we, they, construction left was actually the, they put construction materials on top of the field behind Center School and a lot of that material was compacted below the surface. Obviously, Blueberry and Woolswamp have both had renovations and other, and expansions since that time. Are you concerned or is the vendor that you spoke to concerned that there might be cost overruns with the removal of that material? I know at Center, we actually had to go down about seven inches, eight inches and till it out. And I know that you did build in contingency in, in the price that you, in the amount you're asking for. Has that been expressed? Because certainly that was a huge issue for us there.
And I think it probably had to do with the sodding, installation of sod is a lot more elaborate process that you have to remove everything there and dig deeper. Here, we're looking to level it, till it, but also just seed it.
Okay.
So that has not come up, but I think thankfully, because I've learned a lot about irrigation over the last few months. But thankfully, if these applications are approved, then DPW sort of starts to take over and they will manage the project and oversee the actual installation managing with the two companies.
But no, but there's been no indication that there's any sort of like tile or shingling that might pop up like it used to at Center School? Okay, and I, that's not a gotcha, I don't know the answer, so I just wanted to know.
One thing I do know, there's some kind of underground bees or something in Woolswamp School. Yeah, so something that needs to probably somehow remediate there.
Are those the things that show up every 17 years?
No, those are.
Those are cicadas, right? Yeah, okay.
They eat them, the wasps eat the cicadas.
Oh, that's not good, okay. Thank you.
Lot of research. Michelle? So when, when are you looking to have, you know, installation begin? What's the timeframe, optimal timeframe?
It's a good question too. I, so I think it would not start till the summer at the earliest because there is an entire administrative process. I think the CPC is voting on this Thursday or within the next few weeks, but then it goes to the select board, they need to sort of get the approval. Then it goes to the town, there's a town warrant for the May meeting and then the funds get allocated somewhere in the summer timeframe. So I would say, I would guess it would probably be either summer or fall period. What we would do this, but not sooner than that.
Liz, got a question. Something that we used at Center that I don't see on the plan was you need to have fencing around to keep the kids off. And you need to keep them off for a long time. I think we had maybe a year and a half.
Two years worth of rest period?
Yeah, no, that's something that you had expressed as a, as a, as a point of concern, saying that to really get the grass growing and become strong, you need about a year, 18 months or so.
Yeah.
So that's a good point.
And make sure the fencing's good because we had to replace it a couple of times because the kids would need, you know, they would get their ball over and they would need to get it, so.
I think it was just that cheap orange plastic fencing.
It was, and then we, no, I think it was the wood slats first and then those got broken, so then we had to do the other one, so.
So one, Alex coached my daughter about a year ago, I guess, or else, since she's on his team now. And I, I was the assistant coach, which I'm not doing anymore either because I only have so much time and school community takes a lot of it. But, so I wanted to just get that out there, so I am somewhat biased.
It's a good disclosure.
But with the, the field space, I think the thing I noticed the most is if kids are running, you know, full out and they fall in a game or in practice on, you know, the photo we just saw where it says dirt, they really do get hurt because they're just landing on like, it's a concrete basically, you know, you're just falling on your face and they get up and they have dirt all over them and blood all over them and that type of thing. So it's just not, you know, it really is something we should address. I think it is a problem, as Liz just mentioned, that's, that's an issue, just roping off that whole space. And maybe that's why the phasing approach might make sense because we don't want to have the whole area that we can't use for a year or two. But I do think it is, it is a safety concern with the games and the, and the other teams complain about it too when they come to play here. And lacrosse is the same problem.
Yeah.
It's really, people, you know, hurt their ankles, including the coaches occasionally. So it's really been something that I've been kind of surprised about moving back to town, that that's, the fields are in very bad condition in this town, considering. And there's really no fault, I don't think, I think it's just one of those things that sometimes that happens over time and they get, kind of get neglected. But I do think it's something very important to address. I think the middle schools, we did speak briefly about that, but do you want to mention why the middle schools weren't included in this?
Yeah, I think I got a lot of feedback from the community that they would love to see the, this middle schools also because of football and lacrosse. But because of stuff that may be up in the air and whatever comes out from the middle schools, I think the sentiment was there is no more to spend the money there now and then a few years rip that apart in terms of if some, there's construction there. So that was the consideration to not do anything, but I think they're all. The only thing I would say is that the only two fields that are really in good shape in town is Russell Field and Turner Field and both have irrigation. I think that's the really secret ingredient.
So I had a question for you, Mr. Mazza, the irrigation cost, do we have any idea what that might look like and is it?
I don't. I mean, without knowing how much we're going to consume, I can only tell you we have about $2,500 appropriated for water and sewer for current expenses at each of those two buildings. So, I mean, if it's any barometer at all, I don't know if that helps or not.
How about the high school, like these fields over here?
Well, I believe there's wells out back for Russell. I don't know that they've seen really major increases in our water consumption with this field coming online or even when the water is practiced more. There is no irrigation back here on this upper field.
What are the fields, like an acre? Do we have any, I mean, what's the size of the space you're looking at roughly?
Yeah, the size we're looking at is about 20,000 square feet, so.
In each location?
In each location, so it's like.
Half an acre.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I know what their water bill is on an acre and it's, you know, a few thousand dollars, a couple thousand.
You might need to double the appropriation.
That would get offset with rental fees, wouldn't it? Or do we not collect the parking rack?
We don't usually charge rental fees for field use, that's parking rack does. They're permitting of that and I don't know that they charge for, especially in-town programs.
They charge us. They charge you. They charge us, which goes back to their maintenance costs, so they charge like $300 or something.
Do they defray the cost of our, like, of the, I mean, if there was, if there's water usage on our fields that they're collecting rents on, are they charging? Are we charging them for the utility cost?
We do not normally, we don't have many situations, the only one I can think of would be youth football and they're using the stadium field for the lights when they use it.
But under this scenario, would that be something we would revisit?
We'd want to have a conversation with Parkinack on it.
Yeah, we have the two principals sitting here, so it might make sense to ask them what their general thoughts are. I don't know if you've even seen the application, but.
No, Alex had called me, we would support it. The field is, this is dirt bowl and so any improvements would be great. I mean, we have been pretty fortunate enough to fence it off. We still have enough area, we only during recess time really let fourth and fifth back there. We keep everybody else at the side field, so yes, no, I would highly support this.
And at Woolswamp, we've been working on this as a part of our social emotional learning committee. This was one of our initiatives and then in, with our support, Mr. Bradshaw brought it forward as a town resident as well as the physical education teacher. So it's certainly something that the entire school community is very much in favor of.
Okay, I read his application too, that looked interesting also. Maybe there could be a combination.
I was just going to ask that, yeah.
Yeah.
One final question, and again, thank you for this because I think this is heading in the right direction and certainly needed and probably not something we could have prioritized on our own. When it gets to the Community Preservation Committee, have you, I mean, I know you've talked to, to Mr. Bradshaw. Is there some sort of compromise? Is there some sort of, you know, way in which these could be amended to reflect inclusion? Because one of you, if Woolswamp is chosen, one of them is going to win out.
Right. Oh yeah, so because his was a multiple phase in multiple areas, we had talked about it and I think he, because I've done a lot, good bit of work in terms of estimates and so on, he was going to focus his application, modify for this year for a different aspect of his application. So that was sort of saying, I support this fields and if you have funds, please add this as well to my application. His idea is a multi-year project, so he indicated he will be coming back and doing that. So that, that's how we got coordinated over the last few weeks.
Perfect, that's good to know, thank you.
And the other component I noticed with the dirt too at recesses, it makes the grass inaccessible to the kids a lot of the year because it's so muddy that they can't even play on the grass. So the kids are out there, you know, playing really.
So the kids are out there, you know, playing really hard on pavement, and that creates a whole another set of injuries of concern, and it seems like when you live in a suburb like Long Meadow, one of the wonderful benefits is that we should be able to, kids should be able to go outside and play on the fields. So I really appreciate you bringing this support and all the work that you've done, Alex, very much.
My pleasure.
Is there anything else before we vote?
Just Liz. Sorry, I just want to say again, I would recommend, because I believe when we did it for Center through the CPA, that they do want to hear something about a maintenance plan because they don't want to throw their investment away. So I urge you to work that out before you, before this gets looked at or gets voted, and the fencing.
You could even have DPW there with you to, you know, speak to it.
Yeah, Mr. Mazza was there, and he was, they were asking questions about it, and basically said, it is still part of my responsibility to do it today, so I still have to mow it, but it'll be just added strain because of the... So I think that helped, I guess.
I'm just...
No, I understand.
It's because, I think at Center and probably the other schools, I mean, this happened probably 50 years ago, the same thing happened, and then 10 years later, so it, it happens every once in a while, but it's really the maintenance that needs to keep up on it.
Did you say you're going to try to work on the Wolf Swamp, the big Wolf Swamp fields next, or you're going to...
That is already also currently submitted, and if you feel like you can have all three applications approved, but that one is also in dire, dire need to be done.
I just, I know a lot of, it's already been said, but a lot of coaches are trying to get more games out of Long Meadow, and kids aren't able to play locally as much because they're getting hurt, they're stepping in holes.
It was a big, big project.
And it's increasing, it's getting increasingly worse every year, so. Something we need to look at as a community. Any, anything else?
I would just say, after we vote on this, I think it would be appropriate, if the motion's successful, for you to send a letter to Mr. Weiss, just informing him of our decision.
Good idea. Thank you, Michael.
Or if it's not successful, either way, you should communicate with him.
Yes.
I guess it's going to be successful.
And if you can do that today or tomorrow, then we'd be happy. Because we're getting close there, I think they're meeting on Thursday, so.
On Thursday?
Yeah, so.
All right, all those in favor? Okay, thank you, very much.
Thanks. Jess, I can send you a copy.
Thanks, Beth and Mariah, so.
I wrote a letter to them on Center, I can send to you, so you have a basis for it.
Thank you. We are moving on to administrative reports. Superintendent's report is first.
I will spare you, you'll hear from me with the budget recommendation.
Okay.
No formal report.
The only item I wanted to highlight in my school committee chair report is that we had a joint meeting with the select board last night, which I believe was very productive. It was very helpful for the two boards to meet face to face and talk about the middle school SOI submission and some overview issues on the budget. So, um, we were just here last night, and we're here again tonight, and we're plugging ahead and really, really hoping that the select board will sign off on those SOIs soon so that we can get them submitted in a timely fashion and hopefully in an early fashion. Next is Michelle, and the student rep report.
So the only thing I had to add from the floor, um, so the names of the Williams and Glenn Brook representatives, uh, the Williams representative is Brooke Days, and the Glenn Brook, sorry, that switched. Uh, the Glenn Brook representative is Brooke Days, and the Williams representative is Ella Barton. That's all I had to add from the floor.
Are there any other reports tonight from?
Yes, I've got two.
Okay.
I'll start, I guess, with legislative. So it's, since the last legislative update, things are busy. Um, the legislatures are both back in session and beginning to meet regularly. This evening, the governor is giving his state of the state, where he'll, or state of the Commonwealth, I should say, where he'll lay out budget priorities for the coming year. I do know that he is planning to, uh, his budget is going to be released tomorrow per statute. Uh, we are expecting, and was quoted in the paper this morning, a $20 per pupil increase in chapter 70, which is good, it's not great. Uh, that is about $56,000 for Long Meadow, as you heard last night from Paul Visserzak. After this, the branch, both the House and the Senate, will take the next couple of months to do their own work. My guess is you'll see that local aid number move up a little bit more for chapter 70, which is great. Um, no word yet on circuit breaker reimbursements, but, you know, we'll see.
Does the circuit breaker, when does that happen?
We, I just don't know what they're...
Well...
Good question.
It really depends on how much the total appropriation is, and then every year, districts submit claims, and depending upon the total claim amounts, depends on the amount that they can fund for each district. So they've been approximately 72, 70 to 72% of the, the claim amounts, but it does fluctuate.
That's based on, that's the appropriation to DESI, so. So that's that, and then I have an update on the safety and security committee, which you should all be aware of. So the safety and security committee recently met, it was, present was police department, the fire department, DPW, um, at least one administrator from each level, K through 12, superintendent O'Shea, and assistant superintendent Maza. Uh, the committees met twice so far, their next meeting's going to be in April. Uh, they are working on updating, I'm not sure if the committee's familiar, in, in just about every classroom, there is a packet on what to do in case of an emergency that outlines a number of situations, none of which are anything but frightening, um, and, you know, kind of where to go, but it's cumbersome, and it's difficult for teachers or staff in an emergency to have to flip to the right thing. Uh, so they're working on creating a Google Doc that can be more easily updated by each school to make procedures more relevant for each, you know, specific building, since each, no building is the same. Um, the police department personnel are doing a presentation for staff at each building on emergency situation protocols, so that should be taking place in the coming weeks. Uh, there is also going to be a training scheduled by the police department for central office and school secretaries on what those procedures should look like. Um, and, you know, also forms of communication have been a topic at each meeting, so there's not a whole lot to go over tonight, there's going to be a lot more coming. Obviously, we're not going to talk about specific security procedures at the committee level, uh, but I am sure once the document is complete, members on an individual basis are welcome to review it and provide comments to the superintendent. Uh, we want to be very sure not to talk about what we do in case of specific situations in public, um, and there'll be more to update the committee with in April.
Michael, did you talk at all about the defibrillators and the new law that came out? Does that come out?
Oh, I can talk about that, yeah, the, uh...
I was sort of fascinated by that. I think it's mandating each school have...
A defibrillator.
On, on site, on campus.
Uh, yeah, per campus. Uh, it comes out of a very tragic situation in, in Westfield. Um, a student with a degenerative heart disease was participating in, you know, in an athletic event and collapsed on the field, and, you know, had there be, been a defibrillator on site, that student's life could have been saved, and so, um, through some very aggressive and successful advocacy, this organization called Kevs Foundation was able to pass legislation at the end of the last session. Um, I think they, they, they cost about 12 grand each, maybe a little bit less, there, there should be some sort of grant, um, coming through, but there is a requirement, I believe, that there's at least one person on staff, usually the athletic director or a coach, you know, be trained in how to administer an AED, um, to, and then obviously call emergency personnel, but it's, uh, you know, it's obviously a mandate, but I think it's a good one.
Is it, it's funded, or it's not?
It's not funded.
It's not funded?
Not yet, no.
Yeah, that's, so I'm not sure, last I heard, I think that's going to the auditor to check.
Well, she'll probably call it an unfunded mandate, and then she'll ask the legislature to fund it, and then the legislature won't, so that's, that's kind of how it goes. Um, it's definitely an unfunded mandate, so it's a cost that is going to have to be incurred one way or the other, um, but that's the gist of the bill.
The bill's a little vague, too, as far as, it says something like, there needs to be one in the vicinity of any sporting event, something like that?
Yeah, so those schools would opt to buy, to purchase a portable one where they can put it on a cart and bring it here. Um, I can, if you give me one minute, I can pull up more information on it.
I know we have one, I'm pretty certain we have one at the high school already, don't we?
We have one.
Oh.
We all have one in our building.
You do all have one?
Yes.
So we also did the buildings, I'd say, at least five years ago, if not longer, and the committee actually approved the purchase of a second one for the high school for outside of the pool area. So, and I think to what Russ's comments, we, we might have to purchase a portable one to be available, maybe multiple based on the location of our fields. We have multiple events going on, across the street, now at the new field here on the corner, and sometimes on the stadium field, all at the same time, so.
So athletics doesn't have a portable at the high school?
We do.
You do have a portable?
We have one.
Okay, good.
We need interpretation to allow.
Yeah, so...
It needs to be on every sideline, depending how you interpret that.
I mean, most schools seem to be not doing much about this yet because it's not funded, so.
Yeah. You have until July of 2018 to purchase an automated external defibrillator. Um, right now, about 20% of the state schools do not have an AED, which is kind of the impetus for this. Um, it requires education, state education officials to make a list of grants and other funding sources available to public schools, um, so that they can facilitate the purchase of those AEDs, and, uh, like I said, it would require each school to have a person on staff who's trained, uh, or, and the school administrator will need to ensure that the AED and the provider is readily available at school-sponsored athletic events, so essentially near a sideline, like Tom said. Uh, so we're in good shape, which is good, yeah.
And we have people who are trained at all the schools as well to use it, yeah.
I mean, regardless of whether it's funded, we should look at, at the end of the year, we should look into whether we have some money left to purchase one, but...
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Yeah.
If anyone's ever been in a situation, which I have, where you know the power of having one there.
Yeah, it's huge.
It's very, it's impactful, and I was glad that they did something about it at the state level, so. We need to get off track there.
Lot of people glad, lot of people glad, very, very big moment for, for people.
So you have, uh, seal, do you have a report? No.
Am I sealed?
Are you reporting on seal? No, okay.
Am I the seal person?
Yeah.
I didn't know that, okay.
I was.
I guess I got to go to the next meeting. I'm excited to attend the next meeting.
Now that you've been bestowed this great honor that you didn't know about, uh, any other reports tonight? Okay, moving on to subcommittee reports. The finance subcommittee has a list of about four building use requests that we can get through here, so if somebody can just volunteer to read each, Michelle, that would be great. Read each of the motions, we'll get a second, and any questions?
I move on recommendation of the finance subcommittee. The school committee approved the building use request from the Girl Scouts to use Glenn Brook Middle School auditorium on May 9th as presented.
Any discussion, questions, any issues we should be aware of, Tom or Michelle, Russ, John?
I'll, I'll vote first, Tom.
All those in favor?
I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee approved the building use request from the Girl Scouts to use Glenn Brook Middle School auditorium and cafeteria on May 11th as presented.
What kind of rehearsal is that? What is that?
Need it to call bridging?
Bridging?
It's like a ceremony.
Oh, okay, sweet.
It's when they become, where they go from Brownies to Girl Scouts.
Oh, okay.
I think.
Any discussion?
We did something similar in Boy Scouts.
How do you know that, Michael?
We did something similar in Boy Scouts.
Okay.
God, I don't, you know, I knew I had to explain that.
All those in favor? All those in favor of the Girl Scouts?
Well, that makes the most sense to me.
I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee approved the building use request from the Shooting Star Dance Center to use Long Meadow High School auditorium and classroom on June 21st, 23rd, and 25th as presented.
Have we done with history on this event, Tom?
Uh, yes, we, I think as I've indicated in the past, our high school auditorium is very popular in the spring for dance recitals. We have a number of them that come back every year, and we will be looking at our rate structure when we consider FY '18's building use.
Michael?
I know we have a, a full agenda after this. I, I do want to say that, you know, Tom and I spoke maybe a week or two ago about events of this size, and, you know, similar to the swimming tournament. I am excited that people want to use, you know, our beautiful high school, I think we should allow people to use it. Uh, I want finance subcommittee, if possible, to examine ways to better communicate sort of the importance of treating our building with respect. I, I think that the campsite rule kind of needs to be employed with anybody who comes into the building on a building use request. We demand it of our students, we should demand it of, you know, community members, we should demand it of people renting the building, that they should find it better than how it, you know, than how they found it, um, you know, and I know our custodians love the overtime they get, when they get to clean it up, and, and that's great, uh, but, you know, until we are at a point where we have a, you know, specific understanding with large groups of people that, you know, there's an expectation the building is left in good shape, uh, you know, I just, I can't support something that, that's this large, and so I would request the finance subcommittee examine, uh, language within the rental contract to kind of bind, if possible, you know, a level of cleanliness or similar to the building.
Any, anyone else on that? All those in favor? Opposed? And... And last?
I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee approved the building use request from the Cladis School of Irish Dance to use Long Meadow High School auditorium on May 26th as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Same, same sentiment.
Do me noted.
Thank you.
I think that's a good idea, too.
I do, too.
Put it right in my contract.
Having it in the language of the contract.
That way there's, you know, that way I can't complain, nature.
And then can there be an additional fee?
I think it's a good idea.
If there is any?
I mean, we can, I think that we hear when there are any issues, the high school reports after there's an event that's a permanent event, that they're, the building is left in an unacceptable condition, the high school's not afraid to communicate to the business office about their concerns, so we do follow up with, with the vendor or the renter to, to address those issues if they come back the next year, so.
Okay.
Well, we could also add language that says, if something like that happens, you have to be aware upfront that there may be an additional charge, or, you know.
Yeah, I mean, we do charge back if there's additional custodian to clean up, knowing what was anticipated when issued a permit, they absolutely would be responsible for that, but...
An additional fee incurred?
I just, you know, and not to belabor the point, because I think everybody gets it, but I, I, you know, we talked last night about sort of the arduous, uh, you know, conversations that took place leading up to the construction of this building, and, you know, how difficult of a process it was and how proud we all are of it.
Right.
You know, for that, you know, the symbolism of what this building means to me, I, I think that, you know, I want to see people treat it with respect.
Tom, I don't want to put you on the spot at all, but just in case, you happen to be here, we've talked about this a lot at school committee level, are there any specific concerns you want to share? If not, that's fine. I just didn't know if you had any general concerns about these sorts of things that we approve regularly? You, and, and again, if you don't have any, that's fine.
No, I, I appreciate Michael's...
If you don't mind just stepping up to the microphone really briefly. Thanks, Tom.
We understand that Long Meadow High School is a community resource and is a, a great, could be a great source of, of funding for the town if, for renters, so we support it, but I do appreciate Michael's sentiment. We had one incident about a year ago with an ungodly amount of glitter.
Was that bad?
And, 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 in fact, he's had a hard time getting it up, so I, I do appreciate it, but we, we welcome...
See, I got your back on the glitter.
We appreciate, and, uh, but we, we get it, we understand it, we appreciate that, that addendum.
We just want to hear from you for sure, if there are issues with any of these...
No, we understand, and, and as Tom Mazza said, if there were issues with a particular vendor, we will definitely clarify. we will definitely clarify.
You're in communication about it.
Yep.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Okay, all those in favor? And opposed? Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Gotta stand our principle.
Next on our agenda, we have ongoing business and FY 2018 budget. Dr. O'Shea will be giving us a, an overview presentation on the budget.
So where is the, the board in there? Just getting connected. So, uh, should we break it for five minutes?
Yeah. Can we have a unique emotion? Just make a quick motion.
Could I just make a motion to have like a two-minute recess?
Well, three, because it takes a minute.
Three-minute recess.
So do we have a second? All those in favor? Thank you.
You need to keep the consequences around.
Yes. Yeah, that's why they're here, yeah. Yeah, I love this.
I think so.
Acting like it.
You posted. Your, um, your thing to ask him on the, um, school committee was, went to everybody. Did you know that?
And has long been in Long Meadow Public Schools. So, we, from the outset, wanted to build a budget that put together class sizes that are good for learning and reflective of what we've seen in the past. And certainly beyond that, there are basic contractual obligations that we need to meet, and we hope to communicate the budget development and the budget clearly to the entire community. So, one of the things the Finance Subcommittee had asked me to do was to sort of trace the path of the development of this budget, sort of how we got to the recommendation that we'll provide you tonight. And so, I'd start by saying that when we met with town officials back in October, they had projected that we, based on some of the challenges they were facing, that we would be looking at a $272,000 increase in the school allocation from the general fund. So, that was kind of a figure that we had been working with since the late fall. And that was a figure that had been discussed at Finance Subcommittee, it had been discussed at the joint administrative meetings with the Chair of the School Committee and the Chair of the Select Board. And so, that was one of our working assumptions for some time. We also had communicated to the Finance Subcommittee and to the Committee at Large that we were and continue to project a decrease in some of the special revenues that support our budget. These would include Special Education Circuit Breaker Fund and then other regular education and special education grants. And so, that's a significant decline in the special revenue that we rely on to support the budget. And then, we have talked at this committee about, you know, sort of if we were simply to roll over the budget and level, you know, meet our level service obligation in terms of our contractual obligations to employees, we would minimally be looking at $949,000 increase over FY '17. So, you know, quickly, this sort of paints a challenging picture. And so, we realized for a while that we were working with a significant gap, a gap that we knew was temporary, a gap that we knew we could work on. But, as was communicated to the Committee a couple of weeks back, the gap between the funding sources and the expenditures we were looking at was close to $1 million. And so, we realized we had some work to do, both in terms of securing additional support from the general fund and kind of identifying opportunities for savings and reallocating within the budget. And so, tonight, we will present to you a budget that would seek $33.66 million in funding from the general fund. That is an increase of $516,000 over FY '17. So, you recall that the initial assumption was a $272,000 increase in the general fund over FY '17. So, tonight, what we would seek would, and hope to get your support on, would be general fund revenue at that level. And then, that also is, you know, again, about $344,000. I'm dealing in round figures here, beyond the initial projection. Mr. Mazza went back and refined his projections in terms of special revenues, and that decrease has been projected at $241,286 below what we experienced in FY '17. So, those two figures kind of working in tandem, the general fund increase and the special revenue decrease, were a challenge for us. And yet, again, we went back to the budget, we sat down as an administrative team, and we looked to see if there were any opportunities to be more cost-effective, to be more efficient, and deliver even improved services within the existing budget. And so, tonight, what we would present to you is a budget, FY '18 budget, in the amount of $36,511,255, an increase of $275,000 over FY '17. I'll come back to these figures, because this is really the high-level essential information that forms the basis of our recommendation to you. And just a side note, understand that this is just sort of the initial recommendation, and then, I think, we have other opportunities for a public hearing, and then, opportunities for the School Committee to eventually vote on it in early February. So, again, noting that this increase that we're projecting is really below the contractual obligations. And so, the question was, how can we make this work? I think I'm pleased to report that we feel that we can make it work in ways that really build on the successes that we've had and take advantage of some savings that we've identified. I want to pause for a second and just talk about, you know, some of the challenges that municipalities face with regard to the state versus local obligation for education funding. And Chapter 78 does not come to us directly. It goes through the town. But, one of the challenges that cities and towns and regions have faced in recent years is flat Chapter 78. Chapter 70 is the primary funds that the state uses to support local education, and you'll notice that it has flatlined in recent years. And as Mr. Clark pointed out, we are anticipating an increase of about $50,000 or $60,000, or the town is anticipating that. And yet, that's a fairly modest increase when you compare it to the size of our overall budget and even compared to the size of this particular revenue stream. So, that, you know, that challenges us collectively. And when I say challenges us collectively, I mean, it challenges the district and it challenges the town, because it's, you know, as our expenses have naturally increased because of contractual obligations and utilities and supply costs, et cetera, et cetera, you know, Chapter 70 is not keeping pace. I think it, I'm not sure anyone could argue with that.
Was underfunded by about $2.1 billion, give or take.
And I think that's an important thing for all of us to recognize. And as we, as we talk to the town about our needs, I think it's important that we recognize the challenge that it presents to all of us. And so, as Chapter 70 has flatlined, that means that localities, municipalities, have to pick up the difference, basically. And if you consider overall net school spending, this would be the, you know, all-in, all-funds at the end of the year, how much Long Meadow Public Schools has spent. You go back to FY '07, when Chapter 70 supplied 13.8% of our overall spending. And now, it has fallen to 11.7% of our overall net school spending. And Long Meadow's experience is very, very similar to the experience of other school districts. This is not unusual. This is, this has been the challenge everywhere, that you have Chapter 70 that has been stagnant, and yet, costs have grown, partly because expectations have grown, right? I mean, we all kind of recognize that as educators, that, you know, what's expected of us in terms of serving student needs and in terms of regulations and curriculum is far greater than what it had been years ago. So, rising expectations, stagnant Chapter 70 funding, again, recognizing that Chapter 70 funding is not, you know, a, not the biggest factor in our budget, the general fund is the biggest factor in our budget. But, if Chapter 70 kept pace with our actual expenditures, we might not be finding us, ourselves, in the budgetary dilemma that maybe we seem to face every year. And as Michael pointed out, it is kind of, there's some broad understanding that Chapter 70 is, the formula itself, not only has it been stagnant, but it also underfunds and doesn't recognize the true costs of educating children today. In 2014, the Legislature put together a review commission, and I imagine this committee had considered this when the report came out in 2015. But, one of the challenges, there's a few challenges with that foundation budget. And when I say the foundation budget, this is what the state determines to be an adequate amount of money that is needed to educate a child in every school district. The formula was developed in 1993. It simply doesn't reflect modern realities. It doesn't reflect the realities of providing health insurance to employees today. And again, that's a cost that's not directly attributable to us, it's a cost that the town absorbs. But again, I think it's something that, you know, collectively, this presents a problem for us. And beyond health insurance, the Foundation Budget Review Commission also pointed out, and it's a very thorough study, it was over the period of months and months and months, kind of identified that it also underfunds special education, underfunds transportation, underfunds mental health services, doesn't provide adequate allocations for ELL services. And 1993, there were no Chromebooks, there were no iPads, the Internet was not in the classroom, it wasn't even a consideration, it's not part of the funding formula. And so, you know, as we try to keep pace with technology initiatives, we need to understand that that's not even part of the state funding formula. So, maybe it's worth pausing there, but I think it's kind of worthy of us talking about or at least understanding. And, you know, we look for opportunities for Select Boards and School Committees to collaborate. To me, this is an area that is sort of primed for that in the sense that I think the Legislature needs to hear our voice in terms of, you know, that Chapter 70 funding stream. So, I'll get off my soapbox for a minute, but I think it's hopefully worthy of your time and attention.
I agree with you, but I think one of the other pieces that doesn't get taken into the local aid equation in general is sort of this factor we keep wrestling with as a municipality, you know, as Long Meadow, is that, you know, there's a certain percentage for, you know, they take in, they take low income into percentage, you know, percentage into account. But they don't look at the breakdown between residential and commercial or industrial tax bases. And, you know, while Long Meadow might have an average household value of $350,000 and, you know, a sizable, I think it's like $80,000 a year average income, it's not taking into account the fact that any increase because of this decrease in local aid over the years falls entirely on residential taxpayers. That's, the burden is disproportionately placed on them. And obviously, you're never going to be able to get that, you know, moved into there when you're competing with places like Boston and Springfield. But, it is worth mentioning that, you know, that's the other impact of this, is not just that it impacts delivery of services or education in the classroom, but it actually disproportionately impacts costs by residents, you know, in terms of their tax payments, because they're picking up more of a tab for it.
If the Chapter 70 formula was properly constructed, and if there were appropriate increases annually, it would certainly provide relief to the town and the district at the same time, so.
Yeah. I mean, I think one of the, to not belabor this, because I know you have a lot more to talk about, but I think it would be wise of, you know, this committee to express its, you know, its interest in seeing the foundation budget both review, revised and also fully funded, you know, in a letter to its Legislature. I obviously, I can't participate in that, but I think that the rest of the committee should do that. I also think, you know, Marty, it might be welcome, you know, for our legislators to hear from you. I know that other superintendents through MASS do communicate in that manner, and I know you've never been shy to do that, but, so, I would recommend some advocacy on this.
So, to go back to, and bring it back to Long Meadow, and this is sort of a summary slide, the proposal is a $36.5 million budget, which would require an increase from the general fund in the amount of $516,000. That's a 1.5% increase, a little bit more than that, and a total budget increase of 0.76%. And so, the question is, how can we make this work? How can we use this to improve student learning? How can we use this as an opportunity for improvement? And I think there are, there is some, despite what I would say is a modest increase in the general fund and certainly a minor increase in the overall budget, I think there are some opportunities for us that we'll talk about shortly. So, when we look at the budget by funding source, you get a sense of, again, we're mostly reliant on the general fund, you know, which in that is, I suppose, is reflective of the Chapter 78 that the town receives directly from the state. Circuit Breaker, Medco grant and other grants also contribute significantly to our budget funding. Same information represented graphically, again, gives you a sense of the importance of the general fund to Long Meadow schools. The revenue assumptions, so when we talk about budgets, we talk about the revenue side, we talk about the expenditure side, and so, I'll just, you know, briefly linger here on the revenue side. We, again, looking at a $516,000 increase, rough and tough, I've kind of rounded for this slide, increase in the general fund, but you'll see what the pattern has been in recent years. And, you know, if you think about the, those increases relative to the size of our budget, you know, with perhaps 2017 being an exception, there were some years where it was below what would have even been just the amount that we owed contractually. And so, I think it's important to look at the increases over a period of years. And again, looking at that decrease in special revenue of $241,286, most of it coming from a decrease in what we can expect from the Circuit Breaker reimbursement fund. And then, also, Mr. Mazza could also explain for you the $48,000 decrease in school student fees, because that was an important part of the budget discussion last year. So, I'll stop there for a minute, if you have any questions on this slide, before I move on. All right.
Wait, so the 153 is not really a hard number yet, though, right? Because we don't have that?
It's based on this year's expenses.
I would say that's an accurate comment. I mean, most of our special revenues are assumptions based on trending information. We do know, or we have a good idea what we think we're going to spend on special ed tuition costs, which make up a majority of the Circuit Breaker. We don't know what the funding level will be. So, but I would say that we most certainly are expecting to see a reduction in the amount we receive in Circuit Breaker, because our tuition costs are going to be going down, which Superintendent will be covering.
I think it would be just helpful to say, just briefly, about the $48,000.
Yeah, I was going to ask this.
So, during the FY '17 budget discussion, in order to, I think, help balance the budget, a decision was made to use $48,000 in fees that students at the high school pay to park when they're attending school. It was an amount that had been built up over years and had to be used specifically towards costs associated with the high school parking lot. These expenses would be incurred on the town side, they're not necessarily expenses the school department would incur, but to help reduce the overall general fund expenses in FY '17, the School Committee last year agreed to appropriate out of the student fees revolving account $48,000. It was anticipated that it would be a one-time use of those funds, as they had built up over many years. So, the FY '18 budget is reducing the allocation back down to the normal amount, which we appropriate, which is about $35,000 in that revolving fund.
It was basically money that was sitting there that we weren't using.
It was money that was restricted to specific use that we didn't have expenses to go against.
So, it got kicked into the general fund last year, then?
Well, you can't move it to the general fund, because it is, it exists in a revolving account. We charge a fee, we charge a fee to students to park.
Right. What does that fee now?
$35.
Per car.
Per car.
Much lower.
So, since the money was charged specific to parking, the expenses that are charged to it have to be specifically related to the high school parking lot. Since the town now maintains the lot and does the snow plowing and purchases salt, they incur all of the costs associated to the maintenance of the parking lot. The Committee last year felt that it was appropriate for them to be able to charge expenses that they incur maintaining the lot to the revenue that existed in the revolving account.
For that one year.
And that zeroed out that account?
More or less.
Yeah, I wouldn't say it zeroed out, because we continue to charge, so we collect maybe $4,000 or $5,000 in receipts each year. We use the money that we were restricting when we approved the FY '17 budget. But, we did charge, we received some revenue this year, we would receive some revenue next year, assuming we continue to charge to park the high school.
So, in 10 years, we can spend that amount of money again?
Assuming we don't use it before then.
Correct.
So, I don't want to belabor, I'm sorry, this issue. I just, I'm a little confused about, we're charging a fee, but then, the expense, we wouldn't really have an opportunity to use that fee, the money that we generate from charging those?
It would offset costs on the town side.
Which is what we just did last year, no, this year, actually.
Or if we want to make improvements to the parking lot, right?
Yeah, being new, I, hopefully, we won't need any for many years to come.
Like a pothole or something?
Signage.
Has the Finance Committee or the School Committee, did you discuss in the past year at all the fees, the parking fees?
We lowered it in, about two years ago, from about $120, $175 a year. To $25 a year. You know, obviously acknowledging that there is wear and tear that occurs in the parking lot. We had some very passionate arguments made by students at the time about the exorbitance of that price, and hearing it at 175 reminds me that it was exorbitant. But, you know, there's been improvements to the parking lot that have been made since the opening of it. And so, you know, obviously, I think, in a perfect world, we wouldn't charge a fee, but anytime there's additional signage, which I know we had to purchase to go, you know, or there's speed bumps or relining or anything like that, that the DPW may not be able to cover, it's good to have in reserve.
And unless the parking fee went up dramatically, we wouldn't anticipate building up that type of.
Right. 175, I suppose.
Okay. All right. So, on the expenditure side, there's really two different ways of thinking about expenditures. One is the, what our sort of contractual obligations, collective bargaining obligations, things that are important, they're not really discretionary, they just simply have to be part of our budget and really are required to maintain level service. So, and, you know, certainly, salaries represent an overwhelming percentage of our budget, and so, there isn't a lot of discretionary room. But, the choices you make in a budget obviously should reflect your goals, drive your goals, reflect what's important to you. And so, on the other side, there are targeted expenditures. There are expenditures that represent allocation decisions or reallocation decisions. There are expenditures that are reduced sometimes, because we find ways to be cost-effective or more efficient. And then, certainly, we want, you know, in those discretionary areas, we want our decisions to be lined up with what's important to us as a learning community. And so, I want to spend a little time on both sides of the equation here. In terms of the, what is required and what is by contract or through collective bargaining agreements, collect, cost of living increases, step increases, salary advancement due to continuing education and longevity benefit represent significant obligations for us in FY '18. Beyond that, a tuition increase for students that participate in vocational education. This committee and the Finance Committee have talked about the structural deficit in the athletic budget. It has been really frankly underfunded for years, and we've had to do some shifting at the end of the year to cover that on a fairly annual basis. And so, this would, this budget would attempt to address that annual nagging issue. We know that we're, substitute nurses are very, very important to us, and certainly, we want to make sure that they're compensated appropriately and then, some additional placeholder for labor negotiations. So, I could pause there and see if you have any questions on any of these obligations that we're facing in FY '18.
I just wanted to add to the sub-nurse coverage. So, we voted to increase the rate, because we weren't that competitive with the surrounding areas, so that's really that number.
Yeah.
How many students do we have currently attending vocational, you know, LPVC?
So, Mr. Mazza might have to help me out with that. This might also reflect students that are participating in vocational programs outside of Career Tech, which is run by LPVC.
Okay.
We have 16 students at the Collaborative, and we have one student who participates in, at the Westfield Vocational School.
Okay. And, okay, so, I mean, I want to revisit this conversation outside of the budget, because I would like to talk more about increasing participation when available, or with actually, with students who actually want to. But, that's a good place to come back to, I think.
Increased participation at Career Tech over at the Collaborative.
Or in vocational education in general, if they want to go to Smith-Vogue, I guess, or Westfield, you know?
Yeah, if a, if a program is not offered by Career Tech.
They'll go somewhere else.
They have the option of looking for that program elsewhere. It is, you know, a significant obligation for us, and so, we always want to make sure that the programming that our kids need is available over at Career Tech.
Right.
And they've done a nice job over there of kind of keeping their programs current and attractive to kids. And so, that is something we definitely can talk about.
Yeah, no, I mean, from a policy perspective, I'd like to, you know, kind of evaluate ways to kind of move maybe kids who are not aware of those options towards that.
Sure. So, on the other side of the equation is the, you know, those expenditures which represent allocation decisions, which take advantage of some cost-effective options that we are able to secure. And at the, sort of, most notably, and I have round numbers up here, we are looking at a reduction in out-of-district tuitions and a reduction in special education transportation. And I think we should all be proud of these numbers in the sense that as we are able to reduce out-of-district tuitions, that really means that we're finding more inclusive placements for children, placements closer to their home district, and ultimately, placements that are less expensive as well. And so, it's sort of a win-win. And I want to credit Jean Fontaine, the entire administrative team, Mr. Mazza, everyone for working on that collectively to, again, make sure that we have programming in district that, excuse me, makes sense for children and for families. And so, that's a, that's a significant reduction that we're looking at, and it does not represent a decrease in service. In fact, we believe the service that we're offering, some of our needy special education students will improve as a result of the placements that we're identifying for them next year.
I just wanted to tell you, I think that was a great job making this happen, but I, I want to make it clear just to the public, really, that this isn't like something we can do every year. You know, this happened this year, but, and it's the reason the budget looks as good as it does, but next year, we can't expect anything like this to happen again.
And those are big numbers.
And there's a certain point where you kind of saturate the market, like, you know, there's some saturation there, where you get a certain number of students that are still, you know, at expensive placements, and there's not a whole lot you can do versus, you know, there's only so many students that participate in these types of programs.
Well, I mean, a lot, much of this, obviously, is great planning and being thoughtful and having some forethought about the types of services kids will need. But frankly, some of it just relates to, you know, the specific needs of certain children. So, yeah. But, again, I don't want to underestimate the work that the administrative team has done in this area. I think that, you know, I'm really proud of how they've rolled up their sleeves to make sure that we have inclusive placements for children. And then, the second bullet there, again, credit to Mr. Mazza, Jean Fontaine, for working with the Collaborative to reduce our special education transportation costs. And there's a lot of work behind that number, days and days and days of work, frankly. They're looking at the transportation needs of individual students to see if we can... They're looking at the transportation needs of individual students to see if we can serve them more efficiently. And so again, this does not reflect a reduction in service in any way. I wouldn't want anyone to misread this. We have, we have, we're obligated to provide a certain level of transportation and programming to students in special education settings. But we were able to identify some savings in those two areas.
And can, before we kind of move on, a question that periodically comes up before the finance committee that the public may not be entirely aware of is that when it comes to educating special education students, we have a legal obligation. These, you know, the services that we provide, you know, for these students are required by law. They have specific documents in place. And so I know that there's members of the community that wonder, you know, probably for lack of knowledge about why we spend what we spend on special education. And so I think it's important that we communicate, obviously, that we have an obligation to educate every child, you know, in the least restrictive environment, and that includes special education. And I think that, you know, it's also worth mentioning that this sort of reduction, and you did a great job of thanking everybody, is, you know, is no easy feat. And a couple of years ago, we were fortunate with moving the life skills program into the high school to see some of the tuitions and transportation costs come down. And so, you know, it's really great that we're continuing to build capacity and build programming that meets the needs of every child. But I want to continue to reiterate, these are not just sort of nice things to have. These are requirements so that every student has, you know, the same opportunities.
And they're the right thing to have.
And the right thing to have too, yeah, no, absolutely.
Just a quick question. Is that the transportation? Because last year, it went up around that much money for the Collaborative. So have they given you a number to pass it to a meeting yet?
Have they given you a what? I'm sorry.
A number for the transportation?
They did. That, the budget reflects the amount that they are anticipating our costs to be next year, so.
Okay, right.
Yes.
They, they've come up with some new arrangements and they're looking at investing in some, some smaller vans to increase the sort of nimbleness of the fleet.
Right.
And so it's a, you know, they're going to reach in.
Just give us a little bit of info on that.
Pretty sure that we're providing adequate transportation for kids.
It's true.
Now, this also, as far as circuit breaker, because the special ed costs go down, the reimbursement for special ed also goes down.
Right.
So we'll have that to contend with at some point.
Right, right. So as your, as your high need special education costs are driven down, your circuit breaker reimbursement might get driven down as well. So I think you're right in that, you know, and Mr. Mazza is always reminding of this. He doesn't let us get too happy though. He says, we'll wait till next year, right? So he, he, he's, we're thinking FY eighteen, he's thinking FY nineteen, and so.
It's good forecasting.
That's, that's helpful to us, yeah.
And I think, just because you guys said when you look at these specialized costs, I think there is a formula that, or kind of guidelines that Desi puts out in terms of looking at it long-term because it is something. You can go down as much in one year and then back up the next. And so you want to look at it over a longer period of time and base your budget on that.
Yeah.
So I heard last year when the select board looked at our budget and they look at pupil services because it's a big chunk of the pie, that, you know, and what Michael said, it is based on the needs of the child coming in. And you don't exactly know from year to year. And so you do have to look at it over a span of a number of years. So when the select board sees this, knowing that this could easily change next year, but there's many, many pieces to it. And that you're looking at more programming in, in district to bring kids, or to be able to provide for them within district. But not to look at this and think that next year, the picture's going to be exactly the same.
The yoyos.
That's a good point, actually, because some schools would have, would have probably left this almost even to last year because of that. I mean, we're trying to do this really accurately, which, you know, next, that could mean the following year, we have to go to the town and ask them for more money. I mean, that's the reality of it.
Is there, is there flex? Is there any sort of, you know, room in our pupil service lines to accommodate, you know, sort of unknown tuitions we might incur?
Yeah, and I defer to Gene and Tom on that, but certainly that there's sort of a, you have to be conservative. You got to build in some contingency, you know, for unanticipated costs.
Yeah, I mean, I think we based it on the known tuitions that we are aware of right now.
Right.
Every year, there are changes that will occur from now until when we initiate this budget in July, based on who the students are and what their placements may be.
Right.
So there's always ups and downs every year.
But we have some capacity in the line. I know that's like a tricky question because we're going to be scrutinized.
Yeah, I mean, we don't necessarily plan specifically for capacity. But I think things change naturally, which create, for some years and other years, we've actually had to transfer money to cover unexpected tuitions.
Got it.
The budget presented to you tonight and the staffing levels would maintain existing class size patterns at the elementary and high school level. And we'll talk a little bit about some of the implications at the middle school level shortly. We are aware that we have put together a great special programs, speaking program. And this is the program that has brought in Rachel Simmons and other speakers. And so it, we wanted to kind of build this into the budget to make a strong commitment to it annually. It's been really well received. And we want to kind of think about ways to get even more bang for our buck in future years, so.
This, you know, this might actually be a great area for us to work with the cultural council on because I think there is some, a lot of crossover that probably occurs with some of these speakers that community members might actually get value out of hearing. I know a lot of them are focused on, you know, education. But in times, it might actually be another source of revenue for us to kind of work with another board on collaborating with. Just a thought.
Our principals took a hard look at library staffing. And based on the sections that we are projecting next year at the elementary level, we believe there can be some adjustments to library staffing at each of our elementary schools. These are sort of marginal decreases in staffing at each of the three schools. And would result in a decreased expenditures there of about twenty-six thousand dollars. And then maybe the most noteworthy items here, I put them all up at once because I want to talk about them individually. One is a increase in our technology commitment. The second relates to middle school staffing. And then the third relates to the commitment that we have made to build out the elementary science curriculum. And so we'll take each of those sort of one at a time. And I suspect there might be questions as we go. With regard to technology, Long Meadow, I would say, is a leader in the area and in the, in the, in the region in this part of the country in terms of technology integration. And we are fortunate that there, we have made in past years important investments in devices for students. And I want to thank Nick George for doing a great job of kind of keeping a good inventory of our equipment. And so this is, this chart represents the student devices at each of our schools. You'll see that across the district, one thousand eight hundred and eighty-six devices, resulting in a student-to-device ratio of one and a half students to every device in the district. And so one of the concerns that Nick expressed to me very early on was that there is really no budget allocation to support a replacement cycle. The investment has been made, but we just need to, we need to remain committed to that direction. And so we are proposing tonight that we take important steps forward in ensuring that there is an appropriate allocation to replace obsolete equipment and perhaps even expand access as those decisions are made. So how, what would that look like? Certainly, there has, a lot of planning has been done. There is some additional work that we still have to do. But Nick has identified devices that are at the end of the line, that are in need of replacement. And you recall that when you submitted a capital budget, you had signaled this to the town. You had let them know that this was an important need. Excuse me. And certainly, we have some, some needs. Nick has made it clear to us that so much of the equipment is reaching the end of its line. The iPad twos that you see in the left-hand column there are no longer supported by Apple. They're a great option for our lower elementary students, but they're no longer supported. And we'll need to be, we'll need to think about a replacement plan. Excuse me. I think I'll make it. Maybe that's a good thing, right? The end computing devices are, that's a single terminal that supports four screens. And they were a great choice for Long Meadow years ago. But that hardware is no longer supported and doesn't really provide us the type of, level of access that our kids need. So those end computing devices, which are spread across the district, need to be replaced.
Where do we have those?
The principals are here, Ted, we can, and Nick certainly can.
Oh, they're up there.
They're on the, the quantities.
Oh, yeah, look at that, okay.
And in fact, the quantities have changed a little bit just since this has been put together because in some cases, they weren't functional to the extent where the person who was there said, it's more useful if I just have a desk available then.
Right, they just need a counter space.
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, it's old hardware that the manufacturer doesn't support anymore. And as issues are arising with them, there's not.
So what does it get replaced by?
Chromebooks seem like a really appropriate replacement device in the case of end computing, yes?
I've never heard of end computing before.
Yeah, it was very popular maybe five years ago. And it allowed you to power multiple keyboard and monitor stations with a single desktop computer. So it was kind of a thin client setup.
Wow.
So there's certainly some decisions to be made in terms of the devices that we would want to replace these age devices with. In some cases, you'd be able to replace them with less expensive devices. Nick mentioned the Chromebooks increasingly. Districts, including Long Meadow, are relying on Chromebooks. It's a, it's an affordable solution. It gives kids web access. It supports Google Classroom. They start up quickly. They, they're really working well. And I think our middle school teachers are often competing, to put it lightly. They're competing with each other to get access to the Chromebook card. So we want to make sure that we have adequate access for students and teachers. Another component of this technology investment would be to expand our bandwidth capacity. As you add more devices and as there's more, more streaming, more software, it would make sense to make sure that we have the bandwidth in place to move forward. And so, thank you so much. So that is an important step forward for us, hopefully, in terms of technology. Maybe worth stopping for a minute to see if you have any technology-related questions. And Nick, if there are some questions, it might, might be helpful if you come up to the microphone as well.
I don't have a specific question as much as, you know, sort of a comment, which is that I'm incredibly happy to see that this is part of our budget. In some context, you know, obviously before you were here, we worked very hard to try to get the initial purchase of some of these devices that are actually going offline now into the budget the first time. You know, the previous method of funding these was through capital. And it wasn't always congruent with what their definition of capital was. And obviously, we prioritized, you know, like a million-dollar purchase of computers in our capital this year. But I'm just, you know, I think this is the right strategy to continue to employ. And I think what a lot of people don't know is that the state has sort of requirements on the types of technology students should have access to. And, you know, the level of access they should have, whether it's two to one or one to one. So, you know, especially as we move towards MCAS 2.0 and the need becomes that much more pronounced, that I think that this is, you know, fantastic to see that we have a plan in place. So thank you for, you know, figuring out how to make this work. And I can only imagine that over the next couple of years, we'll see this number continue to exist and maybe grow if we can accommodate it.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, I've been working very closely with Marty and Tom on it. And this kind of is an attempt to start addressing the areas of highest need.
Great.
Like you kind of alluded to, it doesn't really address the ongoing replacement cost of the larger quantity of equipment that we have out there already. But we've kind of worked to identify the areas where we're in a more time-sensitive need for replacement. And this would be a step in that direction.
And in this, are we, you know, so we're getting, we're not going to purchase iPads again, correct? We're going to kind of just move towards Chromebooks, or are we going to continue to do some sort of tablet device?
What we've seen and based on feedback I've heard from teachers and our technology integration specialists and principals is that iPads are very effectively used, especially at the younger grade levels.
Great.
So we still think there's a place for them in our technology deployment. The quantity that you have up there is throughout the entire district for iPad twos. And that one hundred and fifty-three thousand would be a full replacement cost, assuming we replaced every single one. But the details of that kind of implementation would be that we would be checking at each location to see if there's an opportunity to replace a more expensive iPad cart with a cart of Chromebooks.
Right.
So if you're at the middle school level, if they're using a lot of web-based resources, it makes a lot of sense to maybe scale down an iPad deployment in favor of more, less expensive devices. But at the elementary level, those deployments are predominantly used at the lower grade levels. They aren't introduced to their Google Apps account yet. There's some very effective apps that they use that are available on the iPad. So that would be something we'd look to continue supporting.
And I know that, not that I want to kind of go to the well on this one, but I know that previously Leaf and the PTOs have funded the purchase of some of these carts. Is that anything that we've explored, you know, going back on?
Yeah, I think, so we've been fortunate that Leaf has kind of helped us out with Chromebook deployment across the district. And I think for reasons that I totally understand, they're, they're interested in kind of moving beyond that.
Sure.
They feel like they've kind of planted some important seeds for us and we've kind of run with that. And, but I think what, what we're seeing from teachers and what Leaf is receptive to is grants that push us even further, you know? And so that's a good thing. But it does mean that we, you know, have to look to ourselves to more to deal with the Chromebook deployment.
I think, isn't Williams Pack, they're donating?
They're in the process of adding a Chromebook cart to the building.
Yeah. So I think some of the PTOs and packs are still doing it.
Yeah. I don't, you know, I know that we, we don't want to continue to kind of go to the well on that because it's a big purchase and, you know, it's kind of not fair in a lot of ways because there's other things that PTOs could and should fund, but.
There's also a question of equality. Because if you have, and I just got an email about this, but Williams gets a cart, Glenn Brook doesn't, or Wilson gets something, and there's an issue with funding things that way, but.
Right.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's kind of.
So this would be a significant step forward for us. And yet certainly, as the capital request suggested, this really doesn't fully address the need to ensure that we have an adequate replacement cycle. So this is an important step forward. It begins the conversation, but there's more work to be done. With regard to our middle schools, thank you, Nick. I shared this with the school committee, I think, in the past. We have a community survey, staff and community survey that is out. And there are hundreds and hundreds of respondents. And we had asked the question, for the district to successfully improve student learning for all students over the next three years, what would be your priority? And so there were a number of things that respondents could choose from, curriculum alignment, professional development, et cetera, et cetera. But what was the most frequently cited was the, that we ought to be looking at developing supports and approaches focused on the social and emotional wellbeing of students. So that concern that has been reflected in the community survey has also been part of our conversations with the administrative team. And so to address this goal, we are proposing that we increase school adjustment counseling at the middle school from the current sixty percent position that each school enjoys to a full-time position. And I think nowadays, it's more unusual than not to have less than full-time adjustment counseling staffing at middle schools. From a caseload management point of view, from a crisis management point of view, the types of community outreach that we believe adjustment counselors can be engaged in, the social groups that they run, and certainly their participation in district-wide initiatives relating to health and wellness will be very important. So I think we feel strongly as a team that this makes sense. And I know this came up in the past. This has, this has been on the table previously. So this is not necessarily a new direction. But we feel like there's an opportunity for us in FY eighteen to move forward with full-time positions there. Questions before I move on on that?
That's great.
Now, I'm going to take a, I know that last year, there was a lot of conversation. Now, I'm going to take a, I know that last year there was a lot of conversation relating to middle school staffing and the conundrum that we faced last year and will face to some extent next year is that at the seventh grade at Williams this year, there's a group of about 130 students. It's kind of a bubble. It's larger than the class sizes that we see in the other grades at both Williams and Glenbrook. So if you'll bear with me, I'm going to do my best to give you sort of a quick scheduling 101 here around the middle schools. And so what you see here, and I'm just going to stand up because I don't have a pointer. This is the matrix that our middle school administrators use to set up their schedules. And so this happens to be Williams Middle School, sixth grade, next year, seventh grade. And at the seventh, at next year's seventh grade, there'll be 101 students that could fluctuate, but if you think of each of these rows as teaching positions and then here are the periods in the day where you see UA, this English Language Arts teacher would be unassigned, period one and then period seven, and this is the time when kids head off to their specials. So at any time, these 101 students have to find classes in ELA, a math class, a science class, a social studies class, or perhaps in most cases, a foreign language class. So when you schedule a building, administrators often think about, I need places for kids to go. That's what, that's sort of what you hear most frequently. So I need, I need these 101 kids to go to five places. And so this, this breaks out kind of nicely, right? These 101 kids can be evenly and easily dispersed into any one of these five classes, right? And then across the board, this teacher, this English Language Arts teacher would need five classes and they would have a load of 101 students. So they would teach at the seventh grade, they would teach all of the seventh grade ELA classes. So this breaks out nice and neatly and this is kind of an easy class to schedule, those 101 kids, you know, broken into all the blocks that you see here, right? Now where we run into a problem is at the, that bubble class that will be eighth graders at Williams next year, there are 130 students. So the problem would be if you could, how could we take those 130 students and put them into five sections? You know, the math wouldn't work out, you'd have, the classes would be too large, right? Alternatively, you could add another team. So right now, this is one team of teachers. You say, well, this is, they can't, this one team can't adequately educate those 130 kids. So you say, let's add another team, which was kind of the discussion going back to last year. You add another ELA section each period, you add another math section each period, you add another science section and another social study. So then that 130 could then go into nine different places. That would result in class sizes that really aren't sustainable. Does that make sense? So the question is.
Not sustainable because they're too small.
Not sustainable, not sustainable fiscally, not sustainable in terms of what realistically we, we can offer. And then also not sustainable, really not equitable in terms of the class sizes that we see across the district, that we see at Glenbrook, that we see at the elementary level. So the solution that we would have for you relating to the middle schools is to create more sections for those students to go into. And rather than adding a full team, we would add an extra section of ELA, an extra section of math, an extra section of science, and an extra section of social studies. And now you have sort of six places for those 130 students to go. And frankly, it's, would wind up being a little bit less than 130 students because some students get pulled out for various reasons. So this is really, you know, what we see as a realistic approach. It would create manageable class size. It would create class sizes that are, I think, sustainable and comparable to what we see at Glenbrook and even the high school, I'd say. So what the, the result of that would be, if you, this would be Williams Middle School, eighth grade next year. These are sort of actual kids in actual classes. And so you'll see that by adding just sort of one extra section, not adding a full team, but adding a section of math, ELA, social studies and science, we're able to create what would be manageable class sizes, class sizes that are sustainable and comparable to what we see across the district. So the range would be anywhere from 17 to, you got a couple of 24s in there.
So how does that translate in terms of staffing, because depending on how many sections?
So what that means is that Williams Middle School sort of extra team, right?
Yeah.
To kind of, you know, use shorthand language, instead of having four FTEs, four full-time teachers, we would reduce that to three FTEs, three, three, excuse me, reduce it to one. We would reduce Williams Middle School staffing by three FTEs.
Okay. And how many sections are teachers at Williams currently teaching?
They teach five.
And we'd be adding a sixth?
No.
Okay.
They, we would, we would have to be creative in terms of finding.
I know, I was watching their face.
Finding staffing. We would have to be creative in terms of finding staffing to.
Okay.
To fill in those extra sections.
Got it.
There are opportunities with, you know, that I'm not sure we're, we're ready to kind of lay it out tonight, but the modeling that we've kind of done, that there's, there's definitely an opportunity here. But again, it would result in a reduction of three FTEs, three teachers, three great educators, valued members of the Williams community. But really in terms of addressing the goals that we've been addressing, needs across the district, we think it's the right thing to do.
You're good?
Okay.
Because I thought there were teams and I thought this year that it was a, like there were, maybe it was a traveler team, because isn't there seven and eight teams already? So I thought we were going to reduce that.
That extra team right now, and we don't have the advantage, we have Taylor Rye with us tonight.
Yeah.
But that extra team is, is split across seventh and eighth grade.
Right.
Only at Williams.
Only at Williams.
Right.
So it's kind of a hybrid thing.
Right.
But really, you wouldn't need to do that next year.
Right, it's too early.
Because even if you added, to go back to that seventh grade schedule, you know, if you add sections to that, it really isn't necessary. We can create reasonable manageable class size. This is, this is next year's seventh grade at Williams.
Okay.
And Jean's got a lot of experience in that building and she's been really valuable in terms of helping me understand the matrix here. So I think she may be able, I don't know if there's anything I'm missing here.
The split team right now teaches, I believe it's three sections of eighth grade and two sections of seventh. So as soon as you drop your seventh grade next year down to the 101, you don't need those two sections.
Okay.
And, you know, you don't really need three full sections of eighth grade either. So this is kind of an in-between step to bridge that final bubble class.
Gotcha.
Middle school.
Okay.
Russ?
So I think the middle, the finance subcommittee and administration, when we looked at all of this, I think what we're trying to do with this presentation is be proactive so that, you know, last year was kind of the town kept telling us, well, cut this, you know, can you cut here, whatever. We really tried to look at everything and come up with it in advance, which also means this isn't really a negotiation scenario like we had last year, I don't think. I mean, this is, administration did a very good job at trying to figure out what the priorities are and try to come up in advance with what can we cut and how can we save money? So I think it's, this is our attempt to be proactive in that regard. Instead of having the town ask us to do it, we tried to figure out, can we do it on our own and make it work?
The directive, I guess, or the framework that was set up by the finance sub was really relating to class size. I mean, what we understand is that's an important value and it's a big part of the reason why we have such great results. And so we didn't want to create a scenario that was unmanageable and we think that, you know, it's a, it's a hard balance. Principal Taylor Rye's been working hard on it. He's gotten input from Nicole Allen, from Jean, from all of us. We've all taken a look at this and we think that this is the, you know, a reasonable way to go forward.
The difficult thing is losing three teachers that obviously are valued in the community, but I think based on our financial situation in town, it's, it's hard to maintain exactly what we have now. And based on the enrollment, it's, it's hard to justify it really financially. So it's, it's unfortunate to do it, but.
Absolutely. I mean, you never, you never really want to be in that position. The individuals who potentially would be affected by this, they have been spoken with. Principal Ryan, a chance to connect with him today. And so we'll handle it, obviously we'll honor the contract, we'll handle it hopefully carefully and with sensitivity and thought and we'll certainly engage the union to make sure that they understand what's happening and that whatever we do is within, within the bounds of the contract.
Stephanie?
Sometimes and often we can see these bubble classes early. Do we have an indicator, any sense in the elementary grades, whether we have another high enrollment class?
Yeah, I mean, so at Blueberry, there's a bit of a bubble and that will transition through.
They're in third grade. Right now, there are, I have 96 third graders, so I have five sections of third grade. So that's the next bubble class. And there are four sections of that same grade center, so it is, you know, it centers, it's one of their four sections.
So they're in third grade now, so we're not talking that many years.
Right.
Until they hit fifth.
Right. And frankly, it gets, you know, enrollment has been fairly steady and we're projecting it to be steady overall in the years ahead, but I think the middle school numbers are not what they were, right? I mean, at one point. And so as the numbers, when they get smaller, it gets harder and harder to create that evenness. You have to work even harder at it. And so I understand the sensitivity around this.
First of all, I, I like your presentation, but I'm just wondering, maybe we should include some graphs at the very beginning about school population. Because there's a feeling out there, I'm perceiving, and people have said this, isn't our school population declining, therefore why can't our costs decline? And there's good reason to respond to that, both on whether the quantification is correct and whether we can reduce spending. But I think we ought to embrace right up front that we're looking at trends here and yes, this is what we've had in the past, you know, with some columns to show overall population.
So we got the public.
Okay, that. And also more importantly, the definition of, the difference between a level funded budget and a level service budget. That's something we kick around so much, we're all used to it, but the kind of people who are going to hopefully tune into this presentation are people who are, may not be all that strong on that. But it can lead to a lot of misconceptions about what we're doing. So I just offer that as a positive contribution.
Yeah, so we have the public hearing on the 31st, I think, so certainly if there is seven, if there are any additional, if there's additional information you're looking for, some slides that you think would be helpful, absolutely, we can pull some things together for you. And then finally, we look at elementary science and the committee was able to support our interest in rolling out that FOSS science series this year and it has been met with success and I think that it has engaged the teachers, the, the learning experience of engaged kids. And so we're interested in making sure that teachers have the resources they need. And so I want to thank Susan Bertrand for working with the principals and our science coordinator to put together a proposal to roll out some additional grade level kits. And the hope would be that we would provide grade level kits to all teachers in grades three and four. With the kit, they would get the modules, the resource book, essentially a textbook for science, and then the online resources, excuse me, the opportunities would, there would be opportunities that would come from us not having to share materials across grades, certainly control of inventory and, but more importantly, I think it creates opportunities to, for curriculum coordination. When all the teachers have all the materials simultaneously, they, they have chances, better chances to work together than, well, I taught it in September and you're teaching it in November and somebody else is teaching it in January. When they're teaching it, they have the materials simultaneously, there's more opportunities to collaborate and create connections across curriculum. And certainly it's better for children. Teachers can respond in the moment to teachers, to student needs. And then beyond that, as was the case in the past, teachers would benefit from some additional onsite training that would come with the purchase of the FOSS science materials. So, final slide, actually one more after this. This is a, you know, this is a detailed report for you in terms of the reductions and additions that this budget recommends. Again, it all ties out at a net increase of $275,000, 0.76% over FY17. The list that you're seeing here, almost all of this was incorporated in earlier slides, but I wanted to put it in one place for you to better review it. I understand this is your, you know, for some of you have had more opportunity to look at this than others in terms of the finance subcommittee meetings and I look forward to kind of getting some additional feedback from the committee and hearing your thoughts on this recommendation. And please know that, you know, as an administrative team, we put this together, but there are, you know, additional needs that we talk about when we get together administratively. I think our principals would love to build out the coaching model that has been a success for us. Science kits at the lowest grades. Elementary health remains something that we're interested in. High school social studies, we've got to keep an eye on class size there. The technology replacement cycle will need further attention. And then finally, as kind of Russ was mentioning earlier, we want to get a handle on, and John's point about the old biology book, we want to get a handle on textbooks and materials to make sure that we have a good replacement cycle built into the budget for those things. So I throw that out to sort of hopefully represent some of the conversation that we've had as an administrative team and get, maybe get us all thinking about what might be coming down the line in years ahead.
That slide, the previous slide?
Yeah, sure.
Can we grab copies of that at some point soon?
Yeah, we can email that.
That'd be great.
It'll be in this whole thing and then you'll get that particular slide.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Russ?
So I just want to make something clear on this 275 number. So in a real simplistic way, I think for the, you know, public in general that isn't familiar with this, that hasn't been looking at it, the 516, 349 that we're asking the town to come up with, this number's 275 because we're, the special revenues essentially are going down by 240K or so. And so the difference between those two is 275. So even if the town gives us 516, we actually only go up by the 270 something.
Yeah.
Even though the town said it.
So the town, we're asking for a 516,000, 349 increase, which is the 1.5%.
Right.
But because that other line, one of the other graphs shows that the special revenues are going down by 200 and something thousand, our total increase is only going to be about 275.
And the number, to kind of piggyback on Russ, that matters in terms of our conversations with the select board is not the 275, it's the 516.
Right.
And based on what Marty said, the initial sort of allocation of 272, it puts us about 244,000 apart from them. Have you? 244,000 apart from them. Have you, Jess, in your conversations with Marie, gotten any indication of their willingness or understanding, or where they are in terms of understanding our budget number?
I think we've definitely had a lot of discussions about it in our joint admin meetings. And they sort of have a, yeah, they have a sense of where we're at. And I don't think that we are out of the ballpark in terms of reasonable allocation.
I don't either.
So, I think we are well situated, given the numbers we're looking at tonight and given the assumptions that we're making. But again, I'm not guaranteeing anything.
No, you can't.
I'm just saying that the, you know, I don't know if Tom, Marty, or Russ want to add on to that, but that's generally the feedback we, you know, and it's only been casual conversation so far, so.
I really haven't had any conversation with them, so I don't know.
This was just in the joint, you weren't there for that part of the discussion, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, the 275 allocation from the general fund that was projected back in the late fall.
Oh, 275, okay.
They have given some sense that that number, that figure will improve.
Right.
So, I would agree with Jess that it does feel like we're in the ballpark.
Okay.
Could we send this to the Finance Subcommittee and the board? This actually, this presentation, is that the plan?
Sure, yeah.
I think it'd be good just to, instead of them watching our three-hour meetings, just send it to them and let them look through it.
Marty would go to a finance sub committee.
They'll usually invite us.
Oh, they do usually?
You might want to reach out to Marty, but they usually, there's usually a presentation that takes place to them.
Specifically to finance, yeah.
Yeah, which is where we talk to them about why specialization is important.
I mean, this is a much better place than I ever expected us to land.
Oh, my God, yeah.
I mean, I was thinking, you know, we're about $1 million apart. That would be huge, that would be a huge cut on our side to do something like that. So, to be able to come up with these numbers, I really thank administration for doing everything you did, because we could have been in a much worse spot. And I don't think getting into an argument with the town every single year over the budget's a good thing. So, I'm glad that this number, in my opinion, looks pretty reasonable, and hopefully, they think it does as well.
Just getting back to Stephanie's question, and when Marie Pratt was talking about the bubble class at Blueberry, I know, so we're going from three elementary schools to two middle schools. Did we take a look at those projected numbers yet at Williams when that class hits in a few years? Do we have a sense as to where?
Yeah, I think Nick had put together a spreadsheet that rolls that forward for us. If that's something you want us to bring to your next meeting, or to the public hearing, we could do that.
I just thought that was a really good question.
I think it's important to always look long-term, not just year to year.
Yeah. I would, I definitely would, I think it would be helpful for us to look at that at some point.
Yeah.
I mean, it's good information, but yeah.
I think it's definitely good to look at. I mean, it's, the dilemma is, and my daughter's in that class, so she'd be potentially affected by it. But it's funding something, I mean, we might need it three years from now, possibly.
Right.
But to fund it for those two or three years in between, that's going to be the question. And when we looked at it, I can't remember these numbers myself, but it's, I mean, you have to look at that one grade, but also, what would the eighth and the sixth grade look, and the seventh grade all at the same time when that class is going through? And I don't think it was, it didn't look like it was really going to be out of whack, but I guess we should, we should just definitely bring it just to make sure.
Yeah, I think the distribution of that class is more equal than the current distribution of the next year's eighth grade between the two middle schools. I think it was like 100, 235 students, about 116 were at Williams, 107 were at Glenbrook, and I know we're 10 or 12 that would need to be placed between the two buildings.
There also seems to be, I know at Blueberry, in third grade, there's more, I mean, just from personal experience, I know there seems to be more kids than my daughter knows that are going to Glenbrook than the fifth grade, because there's not, doesn't seem to be that many kids that live in this area. But I've noticed some of the families now are moving up to that direction. I know a whole bunch of people in my five-year-old, her age group, that actually live in that part of town now. So, the younger families seem to be buying over this. So, I think we're going to see, over time, there might be more kids going from Blueberry to Glenbrook than there are now, especially, I mean, just based on what I see with my own family, I've noticed it.
Michael?
I just, you know, to kind of follow up on what Russ was, on his sort of round of thanks, this is incredibly impressive compared to previous budgets that we've seen. I appreciate that we're, you know, the hours and the time that went into this, especially, you know, some of the smarter solutions around both staffing levels and the incorporation of technology into this. I mean, this is, this is about as good of a budget as we've seen in a long time, just given the sort of fiscal climate. So, I, you know, I just want to thank you for your time and for also, you know, putting together a presentation that really does a good job of explaining exactly what went into this budget and, you know, where we are, you know, financially. And I think that, you know, it's incumbent upon us to kind of continue this dialogue with the Select Board about, you know, making sure that we're not pressed too hard or too much further away. You know, I think over the last couple of years, we've been, you know, really diligent in sort of trimming back a lot of the areas where there was some, you know, some capacity. And it's left us in a position where we don't have a lot of room to, you know, fund things that pop up. And so, you know, it's not an optimal situation, but given what we have available to us, this is fantastic. So, I really do appreciate, you know, everybody's time. And a couple, just, you know, as a quick aside, I had sent out an email just to Marty and Tom, and maybe Sue was on it a couple of weeks ago with a, Jess, you might have known it too, with a format that the city of Boston used to kind of give their public presentation. So, I'll send it around. It's on this Adobe Spark page.
Yeah, I've seen their presentations before.
It's really, really sort of great. And I know Marty said that he might not have time. And so, I said to Tom the other day that, you know, in the limited amount of time that I have.
I didn't play around with it. It's a great tool.
It's cool. And I've used it, you know, at work. And I'm, you know, I want, in terms of communications Subcommittee, I'm more than happy to take that on if that's a format instead of a paper document.
Right.
I think it probably could be more effective.
Send that to me, too.
I'll send it around to the committee.
Yeah, it'll make powerful.
Mary will start a good job with that, so.
And I think one of the parts of the budget that I've been talking to Marty a lot about is, you know, where do we really, where are we really seeing gaps, and where do we really have needs? And I appreciate the fact that the administrators really took a look at that and collectively really focused on the social emotional component, and that that's reflected in our budget, that that's such an increasing need in our schools everywhere, not just Long Meadow. And to have those full-time adjustment counselors providing that extra support to the children who need it and the classroom teachers who need it is exciting to me, knowing that money's going in that direction. You know, as beneficial as a social emotional curriculum is, really, what I think people need is more hands, more people there to help and coach and support. So, that was a really exciting part of the budget for me. And I, again, I appreciate the admin team for not just looking at what you have to cut and, you know, the bare bones, but really what you need and really going that extra mile. And the last slide, too, looking ahead, and some of the things we really want to work on improving, the continuous improvement of our schools, not just the continuous cutting of our budget, but always, always looking to continuous improvement and knowing that the school committee is committed to advocating for the needs of the schools and the needs that you bring forward to us. So, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Stephanie?
Just to add a little bit with the teaching, losing three teachers is a big deal.
Yep.
And I just want to make sure that we have all the information in front of us. I know last year was, you know, there were a lot of numbers, and some of the numbers were questioned. So, I would feel more comfortable if I had those numbers in front, folks, in terms of the two middle school enrollment numbers as well as the elementary. And then recognizing, it does sound like in two years, we're going to be back with a bubble class. And I think, you know, if those teachers go, that that is very important for the Select Board to understand that, you know, for us to look, to project out, you know, rather than just looking at year to year, and the same thing goes for special, and so many of these things. But that's one thing I would like more information on.
That makes sense.
Thank you very much, Marty.
Thank you.
It was excellent and comprehensive and digestible, easily understandable.
Appreciate the admin and Tom and everybody.
Thank you so much, admin, for staying so late tonight. Appreciate it. No, you have nothing better to do than to join us here, Central Office, late at night. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have new business, and we, I would appreciate it if someone could make a motion on the overnight field trip request. Michelle Grodsky?
I move on the recommendation of the superintendent that the school committee approved a preliminary request to secure prices and make arrangements for students from Long Meadow High School to travel to Spain in February 2018.
Second.
Any discussion other than would be so good to go on this trip? Spain's awesome. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And I need, in terms of our meeting next week, I was leaning towards not, this is under suggestions for future agenda items, we had tentatively scheduled a meeting for Tuesday, the 31st. I don't anticipate that we need to hold that meeting any longer on the calendar. Unless anyone has any objections, I am going to take that, ask Diana to please take that meeting off of our calendar. So, we will not have a meeting next Tuesday, January 31st. And our next meeting will be our public forum on Tuesday, February 7th, in this room, room A15, in Central Office.
And that one's at 7:00?
At 7:00 PM. Yep. Just note that time change. Thank you.
In the back of the night.
And the snow date for that is Thursday, February 9.
Jess, um...
Michael.
Do we plan at that meeting to vote the budget if there's not any substantive feedback?
Yeah, I think that's entirely up to the committee. I, I don't have a philosophical, I said this earlier, I don't have philosophical objections to voting on the budget the same night if the committee feels comfortable. If there is a lot of feedback and substantive issues that are brought forward by community members, clearly, we would need to use either that Thursday date or another date to discuss and process that kind of feedback. So, it really depends on who comes and what the feedback is. Otherwise, assuming that it goes rather smoothly.
When is our next meeting?
Yeah, our next meeting will be the public forum, John, on Tuesday, February 7th.
At 6?
At 7. That night is at 7.
Does the board have a meeting before that, the board's selecting?
Probably.
Marie is considering the 6th for the SOI discussion.
Great.
Oh.
I just heard back from her, so.
Okay, thanks, Michelle.
So, maybe they can talk about our budget, too.
Okay.
The presentation, at least, to get some sense of...
So, my, if I can just follow up on my last question about it, if we are going to have additional conversation, I'm traveling the entire next week, so I won't be around to vote on the budget. If we could do our follow-up meeting that Thursday, it would be greatly appreciated, the night.
Well, that's the plan, yeah. I mean, unless we have some kind of outrageous weather, the plan is to meet that Thursday.
Great.
So, the format for the public forum, I don't know how...
Hearing.
Right. So, basically, I'm just going to, you know, people will come, I'll open the meeting, I'll call to order, do the pledge of allegiance, and then I'm going to allow, you know, interaction, people come up to the microphone and have questions. We can have Q and A with folks that way. And then, once, is that okay?
Yeah, I mean, usually, the superintendent does some...
He'll do the presentation.
...presentation to...
First?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you do a abbreviated version of tonight?
Yeah.
For the suggestion?
Well, just a recommendation. Not that it was all very informative.
Tom, you need another presentation, especially if there's no one else here.
I have to abbreviate.
And then, and then after we do that portion, we'll conclude the public, the public forum portion, and we will enter into an actual meeting format. Michael?
I think that it's historically been a public hearing that's been posted as a hearing, and we have to call the hearing at a certain time and close it at a certain time.
How does that work?
It's just a legal posting.
So, we have to have a set start and end time?
Yeah, you will call the, your meeting to order, and then you will open the public hearing.
With a special motion.
And when it, people are done speaking, you will close the public hearing.
Oh, okay, great.
And then...
I'm not reinventing the wheel.
Right.
Okay.
It's posted that way.
Yeah.
And you'll have the motion?
Hearing.
As a public hearing.
Right.
And then...
And traditionally...
What's on the agenda after that committee meeting?
Yeah.
If you have anything that needs to, you have to meet on the agenda. It's a special meeting, though. You called it special on the set up.
I think we just want to make it clear that the vote might actually happen that night, too.
You can, we can put it on the agenda.
On the agenda.
Yeah, so we should put on the agenda, vote on the FY '18 budget.
We can do that.
Okay, that'd be great.
And I would also say that in those, in that format, we typically don't respond to, unless there's like a specific question directed at one of us, the public is there to be heard. Like, that's their opportunity for a hearing. So, we normally don't dialogue with them about certain educational initiatives. We would discuss it after, very similarly, like visitor comments.
Yeah, that's not the format that I had envisioned, actually. Last year, for example, I came to the podium, and I asked a bunch of questions, and Tom answered them. And it was sort of a, I thought it was a good, good dialogue. Obviously, if something's getting out of control, all real and, but I want people to feel that they're getting response from the school committee and not just talking to blank stares. I think that is one of the, and this is how I did it, you know, when, this is way back, when I was on the committee, it was very interactive. And I think the more interactive we can make it, the better, because it's really, the purpose is for the public, not for us, that portion of the meeting.
Right. So, that's, I mean, it's, however you want to handle it, it's your agenda.
Well, it's ours.
Providing the history is, you know, typically in a hearing, you get heard.
Does anyone else want to weigh in on that issue, or Michelle?
I like to give, you know, the back and forth. I'd like to give the public opportunity to ask questions if they need to. I think that would be...
Yeah, I'm not objecting to that. I'm just providing point of information.
I think it would be good if we could get a large crowd to turn up, very large.
Why?
I don't know how we can do that, but, well, make sure it's posted on all of our accounts. I mean, Russ does it. But each school should try to, just as a public service announcement, put out that we're having this budget.
Yeah. Diane, I think we took out, did we take out an ad, Diane? Is that, did you send that?
There's two ads. One that I'm using, and one in my other mind. They'll be out this week.
Then we'll get, we'll get it out to parents as best we can, yeah.
Because the Select Board can show up at this meeting and ask questions, plant questions. But, well, the more the merrier.
Yeah.
We want people to show up.
Absolutely. I agree with you, John. Stephanie?
I was trying to, so we have our meeting, the forum is on Tuesday, then we have a, or the hearing is on Tuesday. Do we have another meeting on the night?
No, it's a snow day.
So, that's...
It's a snow day. And then, do we have another meeting on the 14th?
Yes.
Yes.
It's Valentine's Day.
That's the meeting with the Select Board.
It is?
That's what I have.
On the 14th?
That's what I have in my notes, tentatively, that we would be discussing it with the Select Board. That was tentative.
But that's a regular scheduled meeting, the 14th.
Yeah.
As much as it would be nice to, you know, if people don't have comments, not many comments on the hearing, I am a proponent of, I mean, everybody can decide, of not voting on the day of a hearing, because it doesn't allow people to contact us and be prudent if they heard something in Marty's presentation, or somebody brought something up that they hadn't heard. There's no in-between time for that input. So, I think in the past, that's been a big frustration, and you don't always anticipate it. Somebody may bring something up that they hadn't heard before, or Marty's presentation may raise concerns. And I think not having any available time for people to contact us and let us know, I don't think there's a big rush for us to vote. That's my...
Yeah. I think...
Michelle?
The only thing I would add is I think we got the budget, the presentation, earlier than we have in the past. So, this presentation was two weeks prior to that. than we have in the past, so this presentation was two weeks prior to that, whereas in the past, I think we got it either the week before or very close to the public hearing, is that?
Yeah.
So we have more time as a committee, and the public just hopefully saw that, and they have some time to contact us, so...
Thank you for making that point, that's absolutely right.
Just, you know, that was, I think, one of the goals that we had was to get it out there earlier, so that there was more time before it had to be voted.
Russ?
Are we going to post this presentation on the website? We could do that.
You tell me, that would normally be my...
Yeah.
...thing to do.
That'd be great, please.
I'll probably annotate it and, you know, so that...
Cut it down.
Well, yeah, and I also, we, in the ad for the public hearing, say it'll be available at Town Hall and also at the library. So we do put hard copies at those two locations for the public.
And hard copies of your documents, the budget detail.
And all the documents, the financial documents that were included in your packet.
Isn't it, isn't there a way to, if we just post the documents, so we're not printing out so much paper, that we could just have it available on...
We do also post it, but I believe you have to have a paper copy available, hard copy available, so.
Just a couple, okay. But now to time.
Yeah, we don't, I think we put one or two in each location.
We put two at the town hall.
Oh, okay. Just laminate it and chain it to the counter. I'm just kidding.
I just wanted to say, I do appreciate the length of time, it's very clear, it is operating much better. I think the point of the hearing for me is that you hear the statements, and, and that you're able to take them in and maybe gather more information, but to just have people come and speak, and then not be able to do anything about it after, and then just vote, to me seems, it doesn't, it doesn't give the hearing, I believe, I mean, typically, you have a hearing, and then there is some time in between.
Yeah, which we might want to do, I'm just, I'm saying we can leave that open.
Yeah.
But we certainly have time that evening also to discuss if we want to. But again, it really depends on how much feedback we get. So I appreciate what you're saying also, and we'll be mindful of that, certainly, yeah.
And I, I agree as well, if there's, you know, things that come up, I think we should definitely delay.
Absolutely. I think we're all in agreement on that approach. Nobody wants to rush. And thank you very much, again, to the administration for this extra push, both with the SOI and the budget. We're going to send you all on an all-inclusive, to the Caribbean.
Checks in the mail. Checks in the mail. No, we're ready for the kitchen. We'll get you a cup of coffee.
Free water.
Free water, thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?